Well, let's go ahead and call our city council work session to order. Tyler, Jenny, welcome. You guys want to kick us off?
I'll turn it over to Jenny right away. She's going to present to you guys the Portland Water Bureau contract for our 30-year agreement.
Thank you.
Very brief overview for me.
So I have with me tonight two faces you've probably seen before. Jeff Fox is with Consort. He was with the firm that helped put our water master plan together. And he was the former Public Works Director of the City of Tuolotan. And some interesting history, City of Tuolotan also buys water from the City of Portland. And five years before the agreement was up, he was one of the couple of the owners that got together and said, hey, this existing agreement really doesn't serve us really well. This new agreement, we'd like to talk about what it would look like. So he's a consultant now, and he's been advising us on the inner workings of this agreement. And then we also have Dick Tally, who is our program manager, both here to share the new wholesale agreement tonight. So there's no decision to be made at this time. Adoption will be considered at a future meeting. But what we're looking for you, from you tonight, questions, insight for us. This process has been going on for three years now. It's a cooperative agreement between 19 agencies. And as this gets finalized, you know, we're in legal review. This is kind of the last real bit we have to make final changes for this new 30-year agreement. People are going to live with this for a long time. And I just want to say from the get-go, this is a much better agreement than the existing one. And City of Sandy is in a unique position. Most, City of Sandy entered into this agreement later. This agreement ends for most people in 2026. Sandy's agreement ends in May of 28. And that's an advantage for us. We've worked with Portland so that they will continue to provide potable, unfiltered, disinfected water to us until September 30th, 2027, when they can no longer do so without us treating it to continue to provide. And I know we've talked about this deadline a long, long time. So with that, I think I'm going to share a presentation. We're going to go over this at a high level. We're going to talk about the advantages and benefits for Sandy. There were two questions we received from Councilor Walker. And I really want to make this informal. We have two really excellent experts for us here, but this is an important agreement. We will be buying more of our water from Portland. As the city grows further out, you know, we are looking at bringing in our other sources. But this is going to be kind of our lifeline to groundwater to help us if there's fires. And for the most part, the terms are really good. Sandy's rates are some of the lowest of the wholesalers. I believe going into the future, we are the second lowest. And the main reason why is that we do have these other sources. And it's a supplement to ours. We don't take everything. We don't have big summer peaks. We also have finally received the model of the equations. And we've really been drilling it down to what that means for us. So I think with that, have a little high-level overview presentation. And why can't I answer this? What am I doing wrong? Okay.
All right.
Jeff, sorry. Awkward introduction. No.
All right. Yeah, so as Jenny said, we're going to just quickly walk through kind of where we are with the Portland, what are they calling that? Future wholesale water agreements. And then we'll talk about some of the features of the agreement. Some of the differences between where it was and when it started in 2006, that we've been using up until now, and where we'll be in the future, and then talk about next steps moving forward. Right. So as Jenny said, so there are 19 wholesale customers in Portland, so 20 parties to this agreement. Three of those parties are choosing not to purchase Portland water as their primary source soon in its Golden Valley Water District. And Rockwood. And so they're all developing their own sources. And so that number changes a bit. That definitely has effects on rates as the model set up. And it has effects on just how we've been working through this agreement, trying to find something that works for all of us. So Sandy's agreement expires September 30th, 2027. Almost everyone else expires end of 2026, June 30th, 2026. So back in 2019, 2020, there was a sense of urgency among many of us to find a better solution than we have today. Then way better than simply rolling the existing agreement forward. So. Next slide. All right. So some of the things, one of the first things we did is we went through the existing agreement as a team and decided what we liked and what we didn't like. There are a lot of things we didn't like, we wanted to change. So the current agreement has this thing called guaranteed minimum purchase. And essentially, you purchase a set amount of water, whether you use it or not. And so that ended up not being a great idea for all of us, wholesale customers, because we'd often guess how much water you need, and then you'd be wrong. And end up paying for water that you just didn't use. The existing agreement had fairly complicated terms. There was a lot of math required usually in March to May to try and figure out how much water you needed per year, how much water you wanted to buy in summer, what your peaking factors were. It's a lot of trying to predict the future. Very complicated. And then there were penalties when you got it wrong. So made it fairly stressful. Usually March is a pretty stressful month trying to figure out what you're giving for water for the next summer. Next slide. So we went through kind of four overall steps to figure out how to get a new agreement working with Portland. So we developed some guiding principles. Five of the wholesale customers back in 2020 pitched in to pay for FCS. There's about $150,000 to start this process and have them develop these guiding principles. Really with this goal of hopefully getting everybody on the same page, sort of come together with a single agreement that works for essentially 20 different customers. Next slide. I won't go through these, but I will say air fairness was that the highest ranking goal. Adding principles, we wanted a fair contract that everybody felt like we were all being treated equally. All the wholesale customers with each other and with Portland.
And I was going to say, for Portland's end, they didn't want to manage 19 different agreements. It was really, really complicated. So they wanted to simplify the agreement and put into cost pools for the essence.
Yeah. So if I were to just break this down to two guiding principles, it would have been simple and fair. I think that's really what over shooting. So some of the current features, I'm going to have to read these out. So that's okay. So guaranteed minimum purchase is what is in the current agreement. The new agreement is pay for what you use. So don't use it, you don't pay for it, which is a pretty important component. The current agreement has 19 hospitals, so essentially a single hospital for each individual customer. Made it really challenging to manage, and it made the fairness portion of that really difficult to manage.
Just to clarify that. So if a general upgrade was performed or maintenance, then that cost would be allocated based on some complicated formulas to those 19 different cost pools to say, well, you inherited 3% of that cost. That's what it's been. And that's where the fairness would come up is objectiveness.
And there'd be arguments saying, well, you could supply me by this alternate route, so I shouldn't pay for this. Also, the rate increases and spikes were much more, they were much wilder if you had a bigger thing to observe. That was another, that was another push. Fewer agreements, more people in the pools, the rate increases are more manageable.
Charging different rates, which you never do.
Yes.
Fairly challenging to manage and caused a lot of anxiety and angst as we went through every year trying to figure out if we're all paying fairly. So the current rate is 1.403 per CCF, and the future rate is 1.77 in 2027. So the rates do go up. So I think that's one of the, I guess, one of the points of the contract, as Portland building a water treatment plant, the rates go up under the current contract, they go under the future contract. I didn't bring that information, but I leave early on under the current contract, the rates will go up significantly more than under this future contract.
Well, and I think I don't know how well you can read it, but it's the 2027 rate. It's actually not the current rate. So that's $1 and essentially 40 cents for CCF compared to 1.777. But I can tell you, our current connection to Portland is not particularly stable. We've lost the connection several times since I've been Public Works Director in only 18 months. Due to union shutdowns, due to the weather, due to high turbidity. And we do anticipate as they go into construction and they're working on these conduits, it's going to stir up more sediment because it's not filtered. We're not going to be able to serve the water. So there's going to be more interruptions with that. This, even though we are paying, what would that be, 37, 38 cents more per CCF in 2027 under the new agreement? Connected to groundwater, it's always filtered. Sixteen is designing this plant. It is going to be able to perform if the whole Bull Run is on fire or if Alder Creek is on fire, which is an increasing concern right now. It, Sandy is going to get water no matter what. And so we get a lot more for that money. But because we're connected to the filtration plant, we have to pay for our portion of those costs. That's the difference. You know?
In general, I think the former agreement favored Portland. And so I think in this, the future agreement, the goal has been to really try and again, get back to fairness and make it equitable across the board. We talked about complicated terms for everybody, including Portland. It was fairly challenging to manage. It was really challenging to predict seasonal water demands. In March, you're just trying to figure out if it's going to test, whether it's going to rain in October or not. So it was fairly tricky. And then under the current system, not necessarily the contract, but groundwater is not available to Sandy. And so under this new agreement, Sandy is able to get emergency water and groundwater will be.
And that's also the difference. All the other wholesalers, there was a turbidity event last November. All the other wholesalers switched over to groundwater, but we don't connect to that system. So Portland couldn't give that to us. We're going to have, I mean, this is essentially going to be an uninterruptible source, where right now it isn't.
We have a new connection.
We, that's why we're moving the pipe.
I have a question a little bit about price. So I may go back up a couple of lines here, but as I understand it, we will have to pay a rate to Portland, but the one point, or is it at $1.3 billion? That is it 1.3, 1.8, whatever, billion dollars that they're putting into their filtration plant. We don't have to give them a down payment on that, correct? All we do is pay them, but we drink water. Is that correct? Well, we have to pay for the pipe to get from here to there, right?
Aren't the rates that they're charging based on paying for this?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's like. Yes, all the wholesale.
Worked it into our rates.
So everybody pays a share.
It's based on the gallons.
And it essentially affects your rate for CCF, for courses, the amount of water you use. And that rate includes the cost for Portland to build the system, operate, maintain the system, and then repair this in the future.
So all I got to figure out is how much it's going to cost us to move from Hudson down to the location of the filtration plant with the pipe. As a big number, the rest of it is just a rate increase.
Yes, but it is a large rate increase. And I think whenever we came to talk about the master plan, we'd done a net present value analysis. It's essentially looked at what happens if you build a new filtration plant, stand one filtration plant in Sandy, continue to buy raw water. Do you still need that water source, whether it's treated or not? And then we looked at what it would be to not do that. And over now and 2050, it ended being, I won't say a better deal, but it's a less expensive option to buy finished water from Portland, to buy raw water from Portland and treat it yourself. I did not bring that in.
And that's based on the MBBs. But in addition, they have a simpler system to maintain and manage.
Yes, you wouldn't have yet. You'd have one, you have your Alder Creek treatment plant versus two.
Yeah, a couple of questions.
Yeah.
One, just because you pique my interest, if the Bull Run is on fire, how are we guaranteeing water? Because that's where it's coming from.
Dick, do you want to answer that?
Sure. So if the Bull Run watershed were to catch fire, you know, during the fire, you're fine because they're pulling off the bottom of the reservoir. The water body is going to decline. It's usually the following runoff season. So the following spring is when a lot of the sediment would be into the reservoir. At that point in time, Water Bureau would just switch over to the wellfield supply. And you, because you're down lower in the system now with your connection, you would have a direct connection to that wellfield supply until that turbidity event.
What about in summers where it's unusually dry and that reservoir is very, very low?
Well, interesting thing, right? With the amount of customers that are getting off of the Bull Run supply, namely the West Side with Walton Valley, Beaverton, Old Pearl. Projections now is that reservoir is going to probably have much higher storage in it than it's ever had. Because we're just not going to have a 25, 30 million gallon a day demand on it. Currently have maybe over 50 million gallons a day in the hot summer. So that less than demand should not pull as hard on that reservoir supply. But even then, even if it does pull down, we've still got their wellfield on that supply, which you know would have access to.
Okay. And then my second question is my understanding is that the filtration plant is not a completely done deal. There's still a few losses in the works. So I have two questions off of that. One, what happens if it ends up being a no-go? And then two, based off of turbidity, and when you're talking about increased turbidity because of the switch over, and I get the groundwater, but how do we combat, say, several high turbidity events?
These are perfect questions. And your first one leads into a question that you sent in via email. There are some uncertainties. They still don't have land use. That decision is expected to be rendered early October. Portland could possibly not get land use, or parts of it could be denied. Or they could just be late in construction. And we have risks on ours. There are easements that may take time to get construction funding could take longer, so we could be late as well. One of the things that we're asking for is that Portland include a third cost pool. I don't think I explained this very well in the staff report, to purchase raw water. Because when October 1st, 2027 comes, if I don't have a connection to Portland, I'm not going to issue a boil water notice. We may, I don't want to do it because it's temporary money, but we may have to put in some kind of temporary treatment to get us through a year or two if we're late. Right now, because of all the work we're doing, I still think we're going to meet the schedule, but we have to, there are these, you know, we don't control everything.
I totally understand that. Yeah. I guess there's what ifs. But like, say they don't get the land use. And my understanding, and I may be misinformed, but my understanding is that they, there are several different properties that they can go to. This is just one. So if they don't get land use here, then there's opportunity maybe elsewhere. I don't know. But I mean, that to me says you could be looking at a five, six, seven, 10-year delay, possibly. All things being equal and everything going wrong, right? So.
That, that that'll be something we face when we get there, but we're back to purchasing raw water from Hudson, putting in some kind of temporary treatment. What?
You'd be.
But I mean, that'll be subject to turbidity and a lot of other things, which would not make it particularly stable. Sandy, and then for us to build a second treatment plant off that source, we're probably on that same timeline. So seven years. There could be water shortages. I mean, it's it's not going to be easy, but we'll face that if that happens. But it, it could. Which, and so, and that feeds.
Well, so I have guilty knowledge on two fronts. And Jenny knows this. One, I used to work for the Water Bureau, so I've worked in the watershed. So I'm very aware of how that entire system works and what it looks like in late August, early September on a really hot year. Two, I have friends who are fighting against the water filtration plant. So I'm I'm pretty well versed in what's, neither, right? I'm Switzerland. I understand their point, right?
Yeah.
But, but so I'm a little, I have some understanding of kind of what's going on and where they're at now.
So to address your second question, the STAN Tech team has really been trying to figure out the water strategy to match the financing. And the work on the conduits and the increased service disruptions we may see in the next few years really highlights the need to reinvest in Alder. We've been working with our our loan, our loan agents, and we have a plan in place.
Which is ultimately kind of where I'm going, right? Is to make sure that the City of Sandy is independent ultimately in their water. Not that I'm opposed to getting water from Portland, that's not it, but that we have a plan moving forward where we will be, this community will be water secure, right?
2007, but headed there, right?
Right. So in two minutes, I'll tell you what that plan is.
I'm sorry.
We have, we have a series of other, I think I've mentioned, there's just not a lot of financing for drinking water. It, I don't know why, but that's the world we live in right now. But Business Oregon Special Public Works Funds, Dick Tally and his team has been working with them. And they have excellent interest rates, as you know. The plan is to get a few more loans with them. We're going to get a membrane, a skid-mounted membrane that we can plum up, so we can actually take Alder down and refurbish it. Because right now we can't. We have no redundancy. We can't begin working on it, and then there's a disruption. This will allow Alder to be more reliable as we do a near-term reinvestment in Alder that gets us another 10 to 15 years as we work out what we're going to do with the Salmon River water rights. We have to do additional studies and you know, we have a limited amount of money we can spend. Right now, we don't have the data we should have on Alder Creek. And, you know, to make public investments, we need to have several years of flow during August, September, October. But we've looked at the numbers and we know that, you know, whether Alder maintains just Alder Creek, whether we bring Salmon River into Alder and Alder becomes a super plant, whether we can do a surface-to-ground water transfer, that's the ultimate plan we'll put in place. But it'll take 15 to 20 years to do it. And, but it, but we have two fronts we have to do. We have stabilization improvements at Alder, which we're launching right now. Water, drinking water is going very quickly. Yeah.
Kessley.
I understand and agree with the comments made about, you know, I was one of the people that testified against hooking up to Bull Run water many years ago. But now that we've hooked up, the one offer and benefit it does offer us is that if there's an earthquake or some other catastrophic event, we do have a backup water system for us. And I am also in favor of pursuing our water rights on Sandy, Sam. But it does, you know, it does come down the same, you know, same path. But the question I had had to do with, you had mentioned that, again, I've also worked in Bull Run and enjoyed it many years ago. But the filtration plant, though, is, I'm assuming, going to be able to handle the possible sediment from a fire. I'm not, one of the reasons for doing it rather than having the laser or other infrared. And so my understanding is that, yeah, that it does does help. I mean, it is able to deal with burned-up watersheds and stuff.
Well, then we don't have in the water industry, we're gaining it very rapidly right now. It's a lot of experience to go by. How much, how much turbidity comes off in a fire event? When does it come off? How long after the fire is out? Do you see this sediment reservoir? How long does the ash stay suspended in the water column? And so, you know, we're gaining that information as an industry. And as engineers, you know, you did the best you can right now to build a robust and technology, robust treatment. But if the event would happen and the turbidity runs up to 500 or 800 parts per billion kind of numbers, those are not something that we've ever seen in our industry, those kind of turbidity levels. And those would be those isolated events where that plant may need to shut down for a year or two while that slug of really turbid water moves through the system. But yes, I mean, being hooked Bull Run is a good idea, I think, in that it's probably going to be the state of the, it is not good when they're playing taps in.
Yeah, I get, and every time I hear taps, I get nervous.
Yeah.
I thought maybe the snow cone guy was outside.
But it's, you know, to your point, it's the state-of-the-art facility in the entire West Coast, right? It's got the best of the best. And so it should be as good of a supply, secure supply. But Jenny's 100% right. And I totally, when we started going back and looking at the work that Jeff's firm did, and we started looking at, hmm, if you guys want to build your own treatment plant, you're going to be in the same boat. Because you don't have enough land. So that means you have to buy land, which means you're going to have to do land use for your own treatment plant. And what was always the the September of '27 deadline kind of took a lot of the options off the table, to be honest with, right? It just takes so long to get public works projects from concept completion with the process and the funding and whatnot, that it became, what's the path of least resistance from a schedule compliance perspective? And it made a lot more sense just to invest and look into that because you don't need that water all the time, right? If we can get Alder stable, eight months out of the year, you're fine. You'll have all the water you ever need, and it'll be good quality water and be treated. So then kind of the next question is how do we deal with the disinfection problem? And I think we've got a good plan of taking the core means out, go back to rechlorine. Your system will act just like it does today. And you're not going to have to address the Brownale Springs or the Alder Shore, right? So that's kind of like mission one is get you stable as quick as we can. Carry a wall base, right? And then using Bull Run water, because it, you know, it is, it's expensive water. We want to not take advantage of what you already have at Alder Creek, right? And get that stable, and that gives us time then. Sandy is a very, I know you don't feel that way tonight perhaps, but you're an extraordinary fortunate community in Oregon because you have four options, five options with groundwater now. You've got Bull Run, you've got groundwater, you've got Salmon River, you've got Brownale Springs, and you've got Alder, right? There are a lot of communities that don't have that freedom to be able to choose and optimize your system and try to balance risk versus cost versus reliability. It makes it a little bit challenging at times to try to tread the right path, but you guys are very fortunate to have options. And you're not pleasant hole or some of those other water districts where you.
On the west side.
So you got one source, right?
And that, there's also the beauty of this new agreement is there is no minimum purchase. And that really helps offset. Yes, the water will be more expensive as we're paying for our portion of the filtration plant. But we get Alder stable. We're only going to use it mostly to peak in the summer to supplement. We're, we're only going to use it mostly to peak in the summer to supplement as we need it in an emergency.
Sure.
We will have to keep it flowing a little bit just for water quality purposes, but, and that, that was what we discovered and what we presented during the Water Master Plan. And the numbers, we're still checking out.
And I don't want to bog up your presentation any more than I already have, but we could buy, we could buy two, two CCFs, or we could buy 20,000 CCFs, and it doesn't matter, right?
Your price varies, right? Because they have that peaking factor in there.
Sure.
Oh, so how much you make, how much you spike, right? There's a measure, but, and, and you have to work with the Water Bureau on that model, kind of understand what different scenarios would cost. Your salmon supplies is your, I mean, that's. It's a diamond, right? The problem is to get that supply proven up on permitted intake right away, pipeline to somewhere treated and into your system. By noon, 10 years, and we just don't have 10 years, right? We've got to go online and try, right? So that's where we're headed. I think it's just trying to take it in steps of, I mean, the thing I hammer away on everybody is we have to stay within our affordability, right? As engineers, we like to solve all the problems at once, but we can't here because we only have so many rate pairs that have got to absorb that. And we've got to take it in steps and methodical build of the system. So that by 2050, Sandy is completely stable, independent, you control your own destiny, and then it's just a maintenance activity after that, right? But we can't do all that the next five years.
Do you have a couple more slides you needed to get through for us, Jenny? I know we're keeping it pretty casual.
So this is essentially next step, so this is important, this is a presentation that they gave us. So we are, right now, we're by this dash line, so we're going through legal review with, uh, everyone's, uh, city attorneys or attorney represent, representatives. So we had a bunch of non, non attorneys help sort of develop this, and now we're having attorneys check this and make sure all we said, uh, works from a legal standpoint, so they're, they're running through that. We just got a copy of the model ready this week, um, so we're starting to run through the model and understand. Literally how the mechanics of the model work. Nice to be able to do, and it helps us confirm that the words we put on paper match the methods in the model. And then, uh, kind of things to be done. I guess I'll jump to the very last step is, is, uh, sometime at the end of this year, first part of next year. Agreement will be finalized, and then it'll go to the elected officials for everyone that's party to the area. For approval, so that's in the future. And then in between that is continuing, continuing to work on. Interim arrangements, filtration plants is completed, so just making sure since you're on a different schedule than everybody else that. 30th, 2027. Um, there is also a provision in there to continue and work Portland on, it's called, it's a backup supply, so. I think it will benefit Sandy as well, essentially for anyone that doesn't know, a hundred percent of the water from Portland, there's an option to reserve capacity to make sure that there are available for you. Details on that, that that's something we're continually to work on.
I could give an example, it, what I'm starting to learn is it's really hard to predict if a summer will be dry. This year, we had an unusually large snowpack, but they declared a critical spring, and our Brownell Springs were regulated down July 10th, which is early. So, um. What this agreement gives us the option is we could basically reserve the water that we're counting on Alder Creek to produce. If Alder Creek starts to become unusually low, and we're still working through what those numbers would look like.
And you have one that's right. Maybe, maybe that was from.
I think it was.
All right, next slide.
Night. That's it. We tried to keep it really high level, but this is just a great opportunity for questions and feedback. There, I will say there, there is an option to have a shorter year term, 20 years, but it increases the rates even more, and we don't really think that's worth it. We're recommending the 30 year, which also helps with the stability.
And you can buy your way out, not to get way in weeds, but we haven't done the financial analysis to figure out that, we decided for 30 years, almost, and we got things done in 10 years. And then you can essentially buy yourself out of the contract.
Now, yeah, so what, and maybe you said it, and I just didn't hear you, what's the duration of this contract going to be?
Thirty.
Thirty years.
Yeah, which is interesting, the 30 years.
All right.
Makes me think, but, um. What I was going to ask is, is, uh, I'm not very familiar with, but I've had conversations about how. Portland friendly, I'll use it that way, the current contract is. And is there any penalties or anything like that if we were to shut that contract down early and move to the other? Is Portland wanting to be. Uh, friendly to us about shutting down the current contract? Cause I know we have minimum. Water requirements that we pay for whether we use it or not.
Sure.
They're going to be able to stop this if we do it early versus moving over to the, the new stuff with the filtration.
Yes, so I think that's, I think if, uh, Portland would love to have everybody move over immediately as soon as the contract is ready. Um, and so I think each one of the wholesale customers is going to weigh what works best for them. On when to, whether they wait until 2026 to have the new contract take effect, whether they do it earlier, Sandy would be in the same boat. Uh, that they can look at how the contracts work. I think Portland's motivation for wanting everybody to move to a new contract at the same time, so they manage one contract.
Sure.
Versus multiple contracts, so, so I think, yes, that is.
But, um. I think the existing great agreement serves us best for now, especially because we're buying unfiltered water and, um. There, there's no real impetus for us to switch over, so, I mean, there could be negotiation terms where we switch over to the new contract, but under raw water. It exactly matches what our terms are, because what I do not want to do is for Sandy to be paying for a certain quality water that we can't get, because we don't have the infrastructure yet, so.
Okay.
So we've just got to get Alder stable first, right? Because that's, that's our key, that's the key right now, right? We're taking the water from Portland, oh my God, we need all this water from Portland, or a crash, or a backup, right? We just, we got to take that variability out of the equation.
Well, having two different sources, entirely different sources, Bull Run versus the. Alder and Brunel makes it really an advantage that if any one of them has troubles, just look to the other, as long as it's not in the middle of the summer, which I understand is part of those. Two to four months that we can't just run off of our current water system without taking something from Portland.
Uh, what I'm speaking to is the mechanical reliability of Alder right now. The ability to just turn it on, hold it, have MGD or 1.75 MGD and just walk away, and it makes a three day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 52 weeks a year, right? Once we get that baseload reliable, then the purchase thing becomes much more predictable, which is much more favorable in terms of payments of, of costs, right? It's, it's the spikes that bite you.
Yep. So we do a 30 year contract, and in 12 years, we don't need Portland water anymore, because we're self sufficient. And I think somebody said something about a buyout, but if we're, if we have no minimum that we have to buy, why do we have to buy it out?
Um. Correct me if I'm wrong. FCS, who we used to do our models, there, there's going to be debt servicing on these, which are based on the number of wholesalers. And so, just like TBWD, Gresham and Rockwood, there's going to be an early termination exit fee if you leave without paying the rest of your share. There's notice requirements for developing new sources, but these are all things we can manage. And there's a specific term that says if your take drops below 90% of your average, it automatically triggers the exit payment. We wouldn't do any of these things, and there's sort of a five year running average. I'm getting way into the weeds, but there's ways to manage those.
Weeds.
Yeah, it's in section five dot C of the contract. And, and I would add, I would say, in the future, you would do another net present value analysis, and you would look at what it's going to cost you to buy out versus what is going to cost you to start a new plan versus. I mean, you would go back through that financial analysis and evaluate what your best financial path forward is. Um, it's some, you know, in 12 years or 20 years that it exists.
It's page 20 on Long Media.
And that's part of the reason why the recommendation of the 30 year agreement and not the 20 year, because the rate ends up getting higher, because Portland wants part of that capital paid off in the duration of the contract. So we either pay a little bit more upfront with a shorter contract, pay a little bit less of a rate over a longer period of time.
On what your buyout is.
But if your buyout is several million dollars.
Yeah. You know?
Why not just buy the cheapest, or excuse me, take the cheap, smallest amount of water from Portland for those last 10 years or something? Just barely paying up to be able to pay the lights.
We also have to remember, we're reusing a lot of the pipeline and infrastructure that was built in 2013. And this is going to be a lifeline for us to that Columbia groundwater field, which can produce 85 to 95 million gallons per day. It's so hard to imagine, imagine what 20, what 25 years in the future looks like. We don't know, you know, salmon's regulated down for fish, and, you know, we're in a situation where we need that groundwater. We will have paid for that pipeline, and there's advantages to having that. To me, that's, that's the city's insurance for the future, for really whatever comes.
Fire can happen, and salmon, and that, that Alder, this is as easy as can happen, Bull Run.
Yeah.
My question, so, um, I know 2027 is the. Date, but I, it's hard for me to imagine they're going to get this thing all built up and running and operational by 20, 2027. So what happens to Portland if they don't meet that deadline? Are they going to, will, is it the, um, who, who's siding, is it DEQ or EPA?
It's EPA.
EPA, are they, so are they going to give them a little bit more time, or?
I, I, I wouldn't venture to ask, I mean, based on our experience, I, I don't think so. That date's been there for a while.
Yeah, but Portland's allowed to put raw sewage in the water.
I.
EPA looks the other way around, man.
We aren't going to pay for any fines, are we? I mean, they don't make it till 29 or something.
I.
We have no control.
I, I've sort of talked with her, I mean, if I was in that position, running that plant, it seems like the option is to switch over to groundwater. But again, that doesn't help us. I, if they get the land use and parts of it go favorable in October, I, I think they'll finish on time. Maybe they're a little bit late, but I mean, this is speculation at this point. It really depends on the land use decision as of now, but I do know. There are a lot of people working, I don't, I don't know if you want to, there are, there are.
I was writing you down a question, I think it was a good question that you asked, or say.
Well, I, I, I have asked.
Have you got it?
I have asked you, big what if. Yeah.
So, um, in that regard, we've got a lot of things happening out there for several years. Uh, when do we start building that new pipeline that goes down the filtration? That's, to me, sounds like an investment of whatever millions of dollars that is. Once we set that contract, we're kind of pretty well stuck there, as long as Portland moves forward. But what happens if, do we, do you want to wait till the last moment to put that in? Or do you want to start, what, what, what's their strategy here? If there is some possibility of Portland failing, why would we build a pipeline to the filtration plant, many millions? Wh- when is your deadline, how long is it going to take?
So we're, the city is, is, is two years behind where they should be.
Okay.
For building this pipeline, and it's, it's the reason we've been doing so many things in parallel and taking a lot of risks. Right now, I have reviewed the RFP for this design pipeline, and it is going to advertise July 26. Um, it's been through legal, and the intention is to bring it to council for approval. Uh, it, it's most likely going to be early to mid October.
Very quick.
And one of the biggest things driving the design is actually the land use, which we want to get a 30% design to submit to Multnomah County in January. So to answer your question, because it's a fair one and it's a good one. If there is, if there is a disruption and they don't get the land use in October, we won't have awarded the contract, and then we'll have to regroup. And we'll have to figure out what our next options are.
Jenny, is our land use, their land, the same, the one application, it includes all parts?
It'll be tied to.
He's shaking his head, no.
Go, go ahead.
So the land use that goes in right now has a pump station on it, but it's a single Pleasant Home Pump Station. And it's like a 10 by 20 building, right? We've been trying to be really, really good neighbors and not. Approach the land use and further angst to that discussion, right? Let it play out, but as soon as that plays out, we're going to have to back in with a, probably a land use amendment, because you're now going on the building. The city Sandy's now going on land, and there will need to be another land use amendment to allow for the construction of, of that pump station.
The pump station that moves the filtered water down here.
Right, but it'll be contingent on the original.
It will be.
Land use application, right?
Yes.
We want it to be contingent, because we don't want it to land use.
Right.
Discussion going on to connect at the same time.
Get that, yep.
Heck of a deal to think it, okay, then we get mail, no, no.
I.
I think they have the harder.
I wouldn't say, they have the harder, oh, yeah.
Ours is all in the road, right, except for that pump station, right?
Yeah.
I, I think ours would be based on precedent, but again. These are unknowns and risks we're taking, and we'll, we'll manage them as we get to the point. Right now, so much hinges on that land use, as, as you pointed out.
Yep.
Makes sense. And we'll make, and you know, we'll go forward in October, but for now, you know, we're, we're moving forward. Um, yeah, and, cause it's, it's barely four years away, is that deadline? It's, it's real fast, and there's delays and construction and other risks, so we're pushing really hard where we can.
The construction bit won't be left for that until probably late 24. Pretty 25, because we're going to get to that land use. Kind of limiting ourselves nine, 12 months for that exercise, right? So. We would have a time to back out at that point, whatever wasn't working, right? So. What I, what I'm worried about is I don't think we can think this is going to be a normal, we'll build whatever we want at that plant on our schedule, we won't. Because we're going to be working on a back deep construction site that's got a EPA deadline, and we cannot get in the way. Along with the question you guys are raising, when that job goes into construction, it's going to be very, very busy. And so there's the primary contractor that has that site, who's going to always have primacy about what, where, truck traffic. And, and rightfully so, right? So we're going to, why we're pushing so hard to give ourselves a couple of year window there, because we know. Maybe if we had, if we were in command and control of everything, we'd do it 18 months, but we don't have the land in control of everything we do, so let's build in some float time. Because we may not be able to access the site for four months while they're all under something, right?
Okay. Got a couple of questions. I haven't gone through complete detail analysis of the contract, but, um, it's pretty straightforward. There is a section in there that says we only sell to our retail customers subject to section 60. 60 says you can, you can sell, but you have to give permission from the administrator, which permission will not be unwilling with help. Have some wholesale customers, correct?
I think these are referring to Portland's wholesale customers.
It didn't read that way, it said specifically, and under one dot C. The agreement, we only sell to. Agreement, we only sell to your retail customers accepting section six dot C.
It says Portland retail customers.
It's the way I want.
Can I read it? It's possible.
Now, so there, there's two provisions. One is for Portland retail customers. It's essentially a pass through and a federal limitation of how much you can charge. Their retail customers and there's another section of dealing water.
Yeah, that's section ten, under the wheeling. So under one C. Delivered to the purchase, right, all water delivered as a purchase under this agreement to be used to meet the demands of purchasers, retail customers. But it says prior to that, subject to six C, which is the. Subsection.
Well, like we have people on Virginia court with ridiculously cheap water rates, right?
Right, I think we have a couple of. Anyway, so I just want to make sure that we don't box ourselves. Between those two sections, section one C and six C.
Okay, and we'll, we'll look at it.
We'll, we'll look at those, but I, I do think this is from Portland's perspective and they don't, they don't really care about our existing wholesale customers. It's, it's moving the water in their system from our, their perspective.
Read it.
Okay.
I'll defer to legal. Legal can read it accordingly, I'll raise that.
One C and six C.
One C and six C, make sure they're in harmony with our. The other section, section four talks about the, uh, the creation of this wholesale water managers group, which I think is a great concept. For the record, I worked in the utility industry. These are common ways that we deal with this sort of thing. What I don't see in there, under the meetings and bylaws, say states in, uh, or B. That the bylaws would be adopted by majority vote, but it doesn't say how any other decisions would be. So the assumption would be that the bylaws, they would have to state how all of the future decisions are made. I like more that termed upfront, so that if the committee will make decisions by a majority vote. I think that should be a clause in the contract itself, not necessarily deferred to the bylaws. Just a preference on that one. And the second one is, uh, under section A in that. Basically, we get one representative there, Portland gets two, and they can bring all the staffers they want to support it. It would be nice to differentiate between voting and non-voting members, so that you can bring non-voting staff with you to support you in whatever role you.
I can respond a little bit to those. Um, I've been attending and I'm actually, as of July, the chair of this group.
Congratulations.
Could you hear the enthusiasm in her voice? Careful what you ask.
Honestly, what I've seen is that. The administrator who is Gabe Somar, the director of the Portland Water Bureau, often abstains in these votes. And you're, you're correct because you are attending these. This is often, Sandy is actually, I, I went there to ask for some forgiveness for an incident we had in August where we had a failure and we took more. And we had to pay for the water, but they didn't include that in our keep because we would have carried that penalty for five years. This is often where you, you make your case and it is a majority vote. Um, and they do discuss, but I don't see that Portland's number, like I don't see Cecilia or Mary.
No, no.
But we can, we can certainly clarify these.
What I'm suggesting is, like I said, I, I helped author a very similar contract to this three years ago to our utility customers. And one of the points that we ended up having put in there is that between voting and non-voting members, so that we didn't restrict people to only one body in the room. Basically have people at the table, people at the back of the room.
Okay, I think it's, it's a really good point. We're, we are working on some language with Josh to success, to suggest strengthening this group. A little bit. Do you want to elaborate?
Right now, it's non-voting, there are vice versa.
Right, yeah, we, we're working with them. So there's. I think there's, there's still a lot of work to be done.
Yep.
So one of the, one of the challenges we have is the way that we practice with this group isn't necessarily written down in this agreement. And, and what you're suggesting on many of these, let's write it down. And that's a continuing, like an ongoing message to Portlanders who work through this, is that we don't want to make assumptions. We all get along really well right now, but in five years, two years, ten years, who knows? So we do want to write these things down. And then we are working with Portland to try and find a way to work for everyone so that this group is, while it's still advisory, they still have. Some way to, to appeal a decision or some of the recourse to talk about what happens when. This group makes a decision and then Portland chooses not to. No, it's not in there today or, but it just goes really with, I think we're at the point now where kind of legal reviewing things where. Nodding eyes, crossing keys, checking the boxes and making sure this.
It would be nice to have more seats, but you know, having helped create one happen in our world, if it was advisory as well. That doesn't mean that it doesn't carry a lot of weight, right?
So yeah, still some work to be done for sure.
We're having round seven. Any last minute questions here? Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
All right, well, turn now, let's get back in here on stage. Please join me in political allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible.
Welcome, everybody. Going to start with the review of tonight's agenda. I will be calling for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. We'll then be getting into public comment. We have three submitted. I think I will probably have four public comments out by the end of the season. And then we will then go to our consent agenda, which has our city council meeting minutes from June twentieth. Those are contract amendment for wage wire treatment plant improvements by slated. Directors. Our new business, we have a planning commission appointment. I contract the award for construction of community campus pump track, pump line and skate park. And the city council rural revision. We'll then wrap up this evening with a report from our city manager and our committee and council reports. Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Council mate.
Present.
Council Smallwood.
Here.
Council Sheldon.
Here.
Council Walker.
Here.
Council Exner.
Here.
Council Hockinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here.
All right, thank you for that, Jeff. With that, I'll call for any proposed changes to tonight's agenda. Hearing that, we'll move ahead to public comment. Uh, we've have nothing spit online. We have three that have been submitted for here. Um, public comment, you have three minutes. Uh, when I call you up, please show reminder to state your name and address for the record. Uh, the first, and I apologize if I don't pronounce the names correctly, I do struggle with that. Uh, we have testimony for our skate park for you, you, Pacella. Yes, please, yeah, welcome.
Hi, my name is Upecala Wijay Rotney and I live at three nine zero six four Dubarko Road. And here in Sandy. So, um, I want to state that I am a member of the Parks Board. And I'm not a skater, but I'm married to a skater and I know several skaters. And, uh, so basically my comment is just that, um, we have some really reputable. Very highly regarded local companies that build skate parks in the Northwest and. Um, and, uh, and I, you know, I realize that there's, there's financial considerations, et cetera, as to why. The bid might be intended to go somewhere else, um, but I do feel like it's a shame to not have the skate park build go to one of our local companies.
Thank you, really appreciate it. Uh, next up is Adam Nielsen. And I forgot, uh, with twenty seconds remaining, Jeff will provide a warning in three minutes. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for your service and for your time. My name is Adam Nielsen, three nine zero six four Dubarko Road in Sandy. Uh, I am here to speak. Uh, also about the skate park, but I put on my card that I'm here also to advocate for veterans housing. I had a long and very pleasant conversation with Mike Jenkins, Porkchop, who's here this evening. And we discussed many issues, uh, having to do with veterans affairs and I just want to wholeheartedly. Say that I advocate for that absolutely and whatever he says. I'm behind him, uh, even if we have to funnel money from a skate park to do that kind of stuff, that's fine with me. I'll just read the contents of an email that I will send to Jeff after I finish reading it. I served as president of the Baker City Skateboarding Association before moving to Sandy. I'm part of the Skaters of Sandy organization in order to help advocate for a safe, well-constructed, long-lasting skate park in Sandy. My wife, Peck, who you just met, serves on the Sandy Parks and Trails Advisory Board. With Peck's help, I've tried to be, tried my best to be involved with the decision-making process as Sandy's new skate park is designed. And contracts for its construction are prepared and rewarded. I attended outreach events, Zoom meetings, and even went out after hours to interact with American Ramp Company, ARC, or ARC representatives and officials. Despite my best efforts, I have felt left out of the actualities and specifics as the project progresses. And I know that despite their best efforts, others desirous to have input also feel left out and ignored. It may be unrealistic for city officials to expect young skaters to fully participate in official and political processes so complicated, ethereal and quite honestly boring. But it should not be unrealistic for actual grown-up adult constituents who contribute to the local community and economy and are busy raising or influencing the next generation of skate park users. To have their relevant, relevant voices clearly heard during this process. Deepest disappointment is that the city of Sandy seems to be following a predetermined course, spent on awarding the entirety of the skate park contract to a corporation from thousands of miles away. Specifically because that company is not entirely focused on designing and building skate parks. The reason there is only one bid for the construction of the skate park project is simple. The call for bids requires the contractor to build not only a skate park for skateboarding, but also a pump track and a jump line. Features which are bicycle-specific, requiring engineering and materials entirely unlike those requisite for a durable, safe skate park. Unless you are specifically trying to target American Ramp Company as the chosen contractor, this concept is absurd. When looking for a mechanic to fix your car, do you also require that entity to be able to fix your deck and repair your driveway?
Twenty seconds, Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Minton shared with me some of the interaction he had via text message with local companies, well-known internationally. For building long-lasting, safe, world-class skate parks. Dreamland expressed that Sandy City's sixty-five per square foot is, and estimate was kind of high. Clearly implying they could exceed Sandy's expectations and Sandy could have a skate park built by an Oregon company. The company that arguably invented skate parks and has been in the business the longest. Commenting to Minty of SOS about ARC. The owner of Drew Mansky Park said that company ARC has been doing better work than their past. However, it's too bad local companies are not more involved. Thanks for thinking of it, of us.
That's three minutes.
Okay. And that three minutes represents exactly how this whole process is spelled. Not being able to have time to go over it and to go through it really line by line and do the best thing. Very curious where the push for this is coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Got some questions?
Yeah, if you have a follow-up, please.
Nelson, is that what you said?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson, thanks for coming in and sharing that industry for your life as well. In, in a nutshell, you're boiled down. What do you think? I, I understand, you know. The proposal we're going to talk about later tonight is one with the vendor that.
Single bit, one single bit.
But at the end of the day, can you, can you identify what you think we lose from a feature or function?
Specificity, prestige, safety, specifically drainage. You lose local, local knowledge of concrete. You lose having. Evergreen grind line, Dreamland. Those are three people that split off from Burnside. To create companies, companies that are internationally known. Dreamland just finished building in Israel, just finished building in Montana. You're losing the prestige of the world skating community. And, and you're going to get a skate park that's substandard.
Thank you. Appreciate that, appreciate it. Thank you.
Michael, Ed, do you have a follow-up on?
Yeah, I'd like to speak on the, I can't speak on skateboard behalf too.
Yep, so I'm going through when he signed up. I noticed that you didn't sign up, but I was going to give you difference anyways and call you up here at the end.
I'm here on speaking on that behalf, the better is the app.
But we all, we are provided time for public testimony that we sign up for. And I'm going to provide Minty his opportunity, but then Michael, I will then be going to you for your opportunity for public testimony, okay? Yeah, Minty, please.
City Council, Rochelle, everyone, thanks for having us again. Uh, I tried to do this in three minutes. Um, I've submitted this letter to Jeff, so it would be in the public record, but I really wanted to address you guys. I'm writing tonight in regards to city Sandy Community Campus Skate Park plans and future skate park project progress. SOS has so far enjoyed a robust involvement in the design phase of the new skate park. As well as advocating for more skater involvement and oversight regarding skate park design and fabrication. We were caught a little bit off guard when we heard on the day of the bidding was closing on the RFP. We were not even aware that the RP had been issued as was originally slated for release in late August, early September. After frantically reaching out to everyone involved, we were assured that our questions would be addressed and the project was in good hands and was continuing to move forward regardless of this hiccup in timing. After speaking to Jeff and Tyler and finally Rochelle, she agreed to set up a meeting so we could address our concerns. On Wednesday, July fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, SOS representative Scott Minton and Adam Nielsen. Met with Rochelle from Parks and Rec and Nathan from American Ramp Company via Zoom to discuss the following bullet points regarding ongoing involvement with skate park design and build process. All parties are in agreement with the general consensus of our requests, but Rochelle stressed that she cannot include these items in the contract for unstated reasons. It is not, it is out of his desire for accountability and continued involvement should things move forward in the current projected fashion, i.e. are getting the bid. But I am taking this opportunity to ask for a public acknowledgement of these items in regards to SOS's continued role as representatives of our community group. And as the initial skate park advisory board members. Four things, one, SOS asks to collaborate and redline the plans and a continued review of the final, as yet to be completed, skate park design and CAD build plans. We want to do this before the final plans are created, as this will save untold amounts of money and time with architects and engineers. Should we find issues with the design, this proceeds without our continued oversight. Two, SOS asks for the record, asks on the record for consideration of local Pacific Northwest concrete skate park artisans, craftspeople and laborers. Mentioned earlier by Adam and, and others. It should be noted that some of the team structure that ARC has attached to the contract does include a few of these tradespeople. That's a good thing. SOS asks to observe and provide site review feedback to Parks and Recreation. Uh, the project lead Rochelle, uh, during the construction process, that i.e. walk in the site. Uh, this would begin as soon as skate park area is staked out for grading and finalized when ARC begins their final punch list for turnover. SOS, um, will designate myself, Scott Minton, as liaison with site visit dates to be coordinated with Rochelle's office. SOS, number four SOS is interested in a robust involvement with future skate park phase fundraising, event programming. And coordination with Parks and Rec and the city of Sandy and the police department to ensure that skate parks properly maintained and repaired as necessary. I think one thing that Adam didn't mention about the having Pacific Northwest concrete, uh, vendors create skate park. Was that should you have any maintenance issues, they will be skating this park and will be able to come and make repairs and continue to upkeep it as they do in every other park that they build. If these points are acknowledged and agreed to in public on the record tonight, I personally don't have an objection to letting city council, um, consider. And make up their minds and vote on Rochelle's proposal for ARC to be awarded the construction bid. Uh, however, if this is not possible for whatever reason, I would likely join another citizen's pending request, i.e. Adams. To ask city council to table the skate park award vote until such time as these items can be worked out to our satisfaction. Um, thank you for your time. Thank you for allowing our voice at the table for this monumental project.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, can I, do you mind if I ask a follow-up?
Yeah.
Between Minty and, was it Adam?
I apologize, I don't have my hearing.
That's totally fine. I can talk really loud, so. So my question is, 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 so you're, you're talking about like local, a local company building the skate park. Because and, and you keep referring to, to concrete, knowledge of concrete.
Yeah.
But then you also said that. One of the local companies built a skate park in Israel.
Yes.
So they're building concrete in Israel. So why, so I just, I want some clarification on. If a local company in Oregon can build a skate park in Israel, why can't a company in, in, on the other side of the country build a skate park in Sandy, Oregon?
It seems contradictory, but the main concern would be the concrete and the Pacific Northwest and an environment that gets as much rain as it does and has soil such as we do. and has soil such as we do behaves a little differently than our climates and other places. These guys have a laboratory in Lincoln City where they built the largest skate park in Oregon possibly in the world, where they've done phases after phase after phase, experimenting with different kinds of concrete finishes and rebuilding things that failed because of inconsistencies. And that's something that, you know, we'll lose out on if the builders aren't local. As I said, it seems, I don't know if it's locked in, but in the contract, ARC made a project tree of who's gonna be working on what. Three out of the seven or eight concrete contractors that we're talking about working with are well-known by the Pacific Northwest Concrete Skate Park companies that I've communicated with and know. One of them actually is Shop Creek guy, which is really, really important and we're super happy that he's on the project. I think what I'm speaking to is a little more of our continued involvement should it move forward in this fashion. Although my initial concern was, hey, why didn't everybody get to bid? It doesn't seem fair that a concrete company should be excluded from bidding on a project because they don't build B M X tracks and jump lines. And that is what happened in this case. It's an unfortunate consequence of the way the contract was written. I think if we had taken some more time and had some more discussion, we might have been able to kind of suss out why it had to go forward in the way it did. What kind of savings ARC is giving us? I still not seeing numbers to know exactly what they're charging for the skate park. We can't say apples to apples. Our skate park costs this, Dreamland's costs this, Grindline's costs this, Evergreen costs this, Milwaukee Concrete costs this, because they didn't get to bid. They didn't get to bid because there are no plans and because of the way the contract was set up. They had nothing to bid on except, you know, a general plan view with no details. And they all said, no one in their right mind would bid on that because you don't know what you're bidding on. You could lock yourself into a contract that you can then use millions of dollars on. So that's where that kind of stick in the mud is. And I don't want to be a stick in the mud, but I do want to make sure that however this proceeds, that we get to be continued, have continued involvement, be able to speak up in this fashion and kind of use our collective knowledge of, what is it? Seventy years of combined skateboarding would be add all us old guys up, just, and there's a very little sample group. I think only good things will happen. And we're looking to save Sandy money ultimately because we want more skate park. So let's not spend, overspend on our first skate park and then not be able to do phase three. We can put that money to, to other use.
Thank you.
Thanks. Can you just have a quick follow-up?
I just wanted, yeah, I wanted to respond to.
Yeah.
I, I also, I wanna say I'm not, I'm custom speaking and not reading, and I think I would come across as a lot more friendly.
Oh, no, you're, you're totally fine. You're totally fine.
Because I really am.
Yes.
Stoked that this is all happening and excited. I mean, I'm here to express my concerns. So that's all I have time to say. But I am, but to answer, they get a Dreamland skate park. That's what they get out of that. And Dreamland has been doing it longer than anybody. You can do concrete here, you can do it anywhere. They also do it in Montana where there's ice and other places. So it's not just a matter of, of, so. So that's why their expertise is broad, not specific, but it's specific to skate parks.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
All right, Michael Jenkins, three minutes.
My name is Michael Jenkins. I'm a resident here, resident veteran. Also, I'm a Burnside skate park kid. I helped build the Burnside skate park and I rolled down school with cement and put it in there. Also, when I turned forty-five, I helped build on one-on-one the skate park there on Foster. We built it illegally. Built it right when the Corona hit. And a lot of professional skaters here in town, their parents and stuff, all donated. And we built it on the bike trail, looking forward to read all about it. So we heard about this skate park being built, and I want to share how we built that skate park. We tried to go to the city. We tried to do all that and it turned this down. So we built, how did we build it? Is we got donations of the concrete. We got a lab, Rose, Rose City Lab. They tested all the cement and stuff to make sure that we were at, at the level. Uh, Rip City Lab is also licensed construction. So he was able to make sure that we were doing it as spec. Now, I'd like to see we go back and bring it back to the table. Let's bring the Boy Scouts out. Unless the Boy Scouts built these skate parks with these logo professional dads that have contractor licenses. And let's do something different, not go spending our money blowing it, when we can get most of this donated. When we built that, Home Depot donated all the mud. All we had to do was chop up the cement and make our bowls. Now, I'm handicapped. There's a lot of handicapped veterans that skateboard. I want to be involved. I want little kids to be involved that are handicapped and learn how to skateboard. So there's more to this skate park than just building it for the kids. It's for the veterans too. We got a lot of vets that love to go out and skateboard. And they're, they're handicapped, so let's make sure that we're building right. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Michael. All right. With that, we'll move ahead in our agenda to our.
I would like to speak on my other behalf. I didn't fill it out because.
I know you had the other thing, so please, yeah, please provide us a couple of minutes of testimony for your veterans deal. We've been talking about it, waiting for it. I'd love to hear it. Please.
My name is Mike Jenkins. I came in last week, or last time. Well, it's gonna be more than three minutes, because I'm gonna update you what's happened since then. Since then, since I came into city council last month, I, my van had been shot up. My window was shot, and I had them with a, with a, with a water bottle. And there was a marble like this inside of my van, while me and my service dog was in it. Okay, my service dog is fifteen hundred dollars debt bill. And thank God there was an angel that night that came up and paid my dog, so he could get his medicine. And then the doctor paid the four hundred dollars so I could get the medicine. Then Saturday, this Saturday, I was out doing my laps. Everybody seen I've been doing my laps every day with, for my veterans, thanks to speak out that we are here. We are alive, and I'm bringing a veteran program here. Now, we got the thirty million dollar federal grant. I just spoke with the commissioner there. We're gonna sit down and judge how we're gonna spend that thirty million. I want to make right there, that blue building, the veterans, so. I want, I got thirty million dollar federal grant already licensed up, ready to go. We just gotta get the city on board. And we have the B A, we have the Vietnam vets, we got other disabled vets, combat vets. We got a lot of vets ready to back this up. This could be a big thing for Sandy. And there'd been a lot of corruption in this town. And I put it out there with the police what's going on. The last thing I gotta say is, is Saturday, I was coming up the hill from the boot cart. Had this guy jump out, following me with his camera, calling me a child molester, calling me a piece of shit homeless person, telling me that my American flags, that you showed up my ass. When we get up to the Rip City Glass, this dude comes out of the store, throws alcohol in my eyes. I jump up, I put my knee on my chair. I throw my slurpee and I said, let's get it on you two. Then I crawled over and I sat underneath gateway sign. Sergeant came up, gave me eye drops, did the report. The neighbor of the, one of the neighbors that, you know, came out and said, when was the last time you ate? And I said, three days. He brought me a sandwich out. And I took the first bite in three days, and I had kerosene in a hot oil all over me.
Twenty seconds, Mr. Jenkins.
I don't care. I'm saying right now, I need fucking help. I'm pissed. I called Saturday, ninety-five degree weather outside, and I couldn't get a bottle of water. God bless America.
Thank you for your testimony, Michael. Please announce I'm on deaf ears. Really appreciate it. Thank you for your participation.
We better have a talk.
All right, sure.
We're not playing games, Mayor.
All right.
It's time to take off your dancing shoes and get, get real. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
I got my dancing shoes.
All right, we're gonna move ahead to new business. Actually, we're gonna, our consent agenda with our city council meeting minutes from June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, as well as our contract amendment for wastewater treatment plant improvements. Unless there's discussion or questions, we'll entertain a motion. For a second.
Second.
There's a motion by Councilor Walker and a second by Councilor Exer to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nays. Motion carries. Moving ahead, new business, planning commission appointment. Jeff, you want to take us through that?
Sure, Mayor. Um, well, this is, this is pretty brief. As the council's aware, we have one vacancy on the planning commission. That was previously filled by former Commissioner Hope. The vacancy was advertised as we normally do via multiple media channels. And we received several applications. The interview panel, which included the mayor, as well as Councilors Walker and Maithen, reviewed the materials and interviewed the applicants on July eleventh. And the outcome of that interview process is that the interview panel recommends appointment of Candace Vincent to planning commission seat number five, which expires at the end of next year.
All right.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. As somebody who participated on it, obviously Kathleen and Chris, thanks again for participating on that. I thought we had great applicants and it was, it was a close decision. And I just would want to encourage everybody who participated in the process to continue to find ways to engage and be involved in our community. And congratulations to Candace. Thank you for your, for your service.
Yeah, Chris.
Mayor, I'd just like to thank staff for expediting the process of planning commissioner interviews to get that position filled quickly. Because I know initial thought was this is gonna take a while. You guys really expedited it. It made it work. Thank you.
All right. So with that, is there a motion for the appointment?
I move to appoint Candace Vincent to planning commission seat five.
So a motion by Councilor Sheldon and a second by Councilor Maithen. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I oppose, nays. Motion carries. Moving ahead, contract award for the construction of the community campus pump track, pump line, and skate park. Hello, Rochelle.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for this opportunity to.
Well, that's my fault, Rochelle. I'm sorry. I didn't think it was.
How do I do it? You know?
It's for a computer, so. Might be one of those icons at the bottom.
Okay, let's just do this.
Sorry, Rochelle.
No, it's okay. Okay. Go off script. That works for everyone. Well, thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on the community campus park improvement. And one of the things that, there are two objectives for tonight's meeting. One is to give you guys an update of where we're at. And then secondarily, we've reached another milestone regarding the action sport elements for the community campus park improvement. So the action sport elements being the pump track, the jump line, and the skate park. And this was one of the items that we have to bring in a specialty contractor to build those certain elements. And then we will be taking the project, the general contractor portion of the project out to bid sometime in September, October. And the general contractor will be responsible for right away improvements, utilities, stormwater, the shelters, the parking lot, and the list goes on. So that's why we're bringing this to you tonight, because it's important we bring on the specialty contractors. We work, work through land use permitting and through construction documents. So we have a cohesive group of people who are working together when we start the construction sometime in the winter of twenty twenty-four.
Can we add that objective to also address the questions that have been raised in the just in the part of the meeting?
Yes, absolutely. At the, yep, following, council meeting. Okay, so to start this off, just wanted to remind everybody of the community campus. This is a three D rendering. And it just shows the concept of the parking lot, the entry plaza. Down below, you have the playground elements. And then in the background here, you have the action sport, which is a twenty thousand square foot skate park, the twenty thousand square foot asphalt pump track, and then the thirteen hundred linear feet jump line. And again, thank you to council for your support for the additional funds to help us build phase two. This is going to be a very large and wonderful project for the city of Sandy. And then there's a quarter mile concrete walking path. And then you can see in the back that that is the connector trail down to the Sandy River. And we're currently building that Cedar Ridge Trail that will connect this park property to the adjacent park property. And as a reminder, this is the Parks Master Plan. So this just lists all of the things that we're able to do now with the additional funding. There are some future elements, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. And those items will become more clear as we figure out the future of the annex and what we plan to do with the front half of the community campus project. But again, you can see that there's a parking lot, the entry plaza, there's a shelter, multiple shelters, there's benches throughout, and then a ten thousand square foot, roughly ten thousand square foot play area. And this is an aerial view of the park play area concept. And this concept was built and put together based on online surveys, community feedback, open houses. And we repetitively heard how there was a desire to have elements that were inclusive, that served, you know, older to younger kids. And so this park concept really encompasses all of those. And another thing to underscore is this is really unique as far as like you wouldn't see these types of features in any other park that we have here in the city of Sandy. So real quick, number one is a slide embankment with a rock climbing the side of it. And the reason that that was so important to bring back is because we had heard from the public, so there, there used to be a slide down there. And that was a wall or a hillside. So that's coming back in honor of what used to be there. And there's a parkour course, there's a ninety-foot zip line, there's a rock climbing, climbing wall, and then a little area that's a rock embankment. We have a swing set that has a nesting swing and then an expression swing. And then, am I missing anything? Yep, and fully inclusive access. So if somebody goes down the slide, we've incorporated where they can come back up the walkway and enjoy the slide. And then the fall material is the woodchip safety surface, which is eighty-eight compliant. And then next two views, we're gonna look from perspective number one and perspective number two. And I thought this was kind of a fun perspective of, if you're sitting on the slide on the left picture here, you can see the parkour course. And then here's the start of the zip line. You have the spinning dome, the rock, the rock climbing wall, or the rock. You can see the swing in the background. And then on the bottom right, you're looking from the swings over to the slide area. And then again, it's appropriate for all ages. We had fifty-three responses to our online survey about this. The Parks and Trails Advisory Board reviewed it, and then we presented it to the C C S and reviewed the play elements. Okay, this is a three D rendering of the concept of the action sports. And again, this includes all the different elements that we had talked about. And the skate, the skaters of Sandy and bikers participated in numerous focus groups, worked with A R C behind the scenes to define and refine some of this. And the engineer estimate came back at about one point nine million to two point two million. And then the contract tonight that we're asking be awarded to American Ramp Company is for approximately two point two, for like about two point two million. And again, it lists the different square footage of each of these elements. And I just wanted to make, you know, really stress that this is gonna be the first pump track, jump line, skate park in the Pacific Northwest. So it's something that's, we're making, we're making our mark. And then real quick, estimated budget costs. So the estimated cost, including design and consultant fees and estimating contingencies, approximately seven point one million dollars. Resources would include six point nine, and that includes the four point five million from Sura, the two million from Parks S D Cs, and then if we get the grant, that will put us at the six point nine million dollars. So at this point, I'd like to put the disclaimer out there, we're still very preliminary numbers. And so we're about a hundred and fifty thousand in the red. So the numbers are looking better as we're getting to refine these numbers, and we're still holding an estimating contingency. So we're working really hard to make that, you know, we've got our allocated amount, and we're working really hard to get there. And you can see here the park amount. So this just shows how much we're dedicating towards the park project and how much is towards the action sport side of it. And again, the park project includes all the right of way on Minnick Scenic Stormwater Retention on the land utility connections. There was a comment mentioned about the skate park in connection to utilities. That is something that during the design, American Ramp Company, along with Michael Hansen, determined the connection of where the water will be drained and what utilities it will drain to. So those plans will be listed out in Michael Hansen's construction documents. So those elements have been addressed. Okay, so the schedule and looking ahead. So in March, we did complete the programming and design phase. And April, we went and presented to the Oregon Park Recreation Department for the grants, and we're hoping to hear back finally about that. And we're in the midst of construction documents. And so again, this includes land use. We have a hearing tentatively scheduled with the planning commission September twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three, which will be exciting and another milestone for us. And then in June through October, we will issue another invitation to bid in a contractual award right now for the specialty contract for the construction of the action sport. And in an October and January, a bid for the general contractor.
Do you have clarification? Is the construction of the general contract stuff gonna happen first and then construction wise? And then the specialty items or?
Yeah, that's a that's a great question. So it's gonna work, they're going to work together because the general contractor will come in and do the mass grading and prepare the property and the land for the specialty contractor to come in and build. Well, the general contractors there are working around and doing the other elements and connecting utilities. So it's really a collaboration between the two.
Then timing today, we've been cutting contract for the specialty.
Yep.
But the land use isn't until September.
Right. And there.
How does that work?
Yeah, so the action sport contract awarding that today would allow us to work with that company. Land use with. And as they're treating the construction documents and then the permitting. And so those, we would be bringing those two elements together at this point. So when we go out to bid in September, October for the general contractor, we know that we've incorporated the feedback from the specialty contractor and that there will be no surprises at that point. Okay, so that is the end of my presentation. And just I'm happy to answer questions, but staff's recommending that we award the public improvement contract to American Ramp Company for the construction of the asphalt pump track, jump line, and concrete skate park for the community campus park project.
Well, I guess if you might can provide us your perspective on all this. Obviously, this is the first of this kind of a project in the Pacific Northwest. So I have to assume your RFP process and the language behind that going up to bid was a little more complex because it's not done that often. How did that affect who was bidding on it? And our selection of who is the right bidder for this kind of a project? Just I'd love to hear it from your perspective.
Sorry. Well, to start off with, prior to creating the invitation to bid, there was a lot of research that went into the process and how to best approach this this type of specialty build and essentially design and then build process. And it was attorney reviewed, and I double checked and triple checked how much, what would reasonable square foot costs would be by comparing not only what other cities are building for pump tracks and skate parks, but also with engineer estimate estimate and working closely with A R C. They provided that engineer estimate. There, we asked for references, and I did some pretty extensive research and reached out directly to Dreamland to see if they were interested in the quote. American Ramp Company does have a very impressive portfolio when it comes to pump tracks and skate parks and as well as the other skate park companies. But because it's a combined element, the two flow together. It's under one contract to build both the UCI, which means, and I'm gonna get this wrong, like you, this, it's like a psycholistic, it's a it's a European standard for competition. So when we build this UCI qualifying pump track, we can host Red Bull events here. We can host the skating competitions. And so we were really keeping that in mind too as we progressed, like how do we, you know, activate that area? How do we bring in tourism? And so that was part of the impetus on why we created the that combined element. And A R C, you know, rose to the top, sent to the bid, and other firms were absolutely welcomed and encouraged to bid. And again, reaching out to some specific folks, skate park or skate park folks that might want to do have explore building the pump track side of it.
Thank you. Done. So turn that question around. The point was made in the testimony that some of these smaller vendors didn't vote because it was a combined broad contract. And they they couldn't. It's not their failing to go or to take on that bigger scope. What would it have taken to have structured these contracts in such a way that they could have or might have been interested in that?
Yeah, it would have been ultimately breaking the contract into two, where we had someone come in and build the UCI pump track and someone come in and build the concrete skate park. However, there would be additional coordination on the project, and the timeline would be different and the cost would be different. And there would be instead of two contractors on site coordinating efforts, it would be three. And so that was part of the significance of under one contract.
Right now, so this contract is in cut, starts with some design level documentation, correct? So what another approach had been to continue a contract for design and then putting a bill contract out independent of design? Is that feasible or not feasible?
If I understand your question, so that that's essentially what we did is we went out for the design portion of both the skate park and pump track. And typically, with these types of amenities, it's a design build contract. And what we did is we did the design portion of it and then went out for the invitation to bid to do the build portion of it in hopes that we received a better price on the second end of the of the process and not having like a shoe in with someone. That's a good question.
I I think so. So if I summarize, it would have potentially taken longer. Having complexity certainly on the boots on the ground for the actual construction itself.
I was like definitely.
Potentially could have cost more.
Yeah, and I would like to say I'm fairly confident that would be the case based on some of the recent square foot examples I pulled from cities who are in the midst of building. We're saving a significant amount of money. By by combining that contract.
So even though we went out for competitive bid and really get one, it feels like a sole source, same vendor who was already working with us, kind of a shoe in. Can you just elaborate a little more on why this is a good deal for Sandy?
Well, again, you know, we're looking at with breaking up the whole project in a square foot. If you want to look at the combined elements, we're at about, I'm gonna estimate here forty-five dollars a square foot. And there's a city adjacent to us that is building a ten thousand square foot skate park for seventy-eight dollars a square foot and just a skate park. So the money factor is a pretty significant consideration. And again, both the elements, because it's a combined, essentially action sport element, it would have been really difficult for a skateboard company to come in and combine efforts with a UCI pump track. And, you know, and like Minty and I talked about in the hallway too, a lot of the folks building the skate park are are folks that, you know, they know and have worked for and have worked for these other companies. And I was fortunate enough during some of the open houses to meet those folks, so.
So I can add one thing to Rochelle, just the sheer amount of administrative time it takes to manage these different contracts and different contractors. Adding one more player to the game really stresses an already taxed team that's, you know, working on Winterfest, working on the park development, the active amenities, potentially a demolition agreement at some point with some of those buildings on that site. And so really just the scope of work and the magnitude of the project, finding areas to streamline is a real asset for some staff as well.
Kathleen and then Chris.
Building on what Don said, you know, normally how we've done these things in the past, we haven't had that much, a bunch of pile of experiences on it. But for example, the proposed project for Mighty Park, where we had a dog park fencing and trail stuff. And the, you know, we had electrical lighting, yada yada, a bunch of different things. Helped oranges and pears. And so the way it was approached is to just do, you know, one contract, just have a general contractor, and then they do out the subs. And they sub out a fencing contractor for the dog park and a trail contractor for the trails. And that's how it usually kind of happens. And so I feel like already we're already having to, you know, we have a general contractor, but we've kind of carved out these specialty things. I understand why we did that because they are special, and we wanted to make sure that we had some control over who who did those projects so that we could get the best approach. I think, you know, I I can understand the reasoning for all this, how it happened. I I know the pump tracks, very few people do the pump tracks. But a lot of folks do the skate park. And I guess, you know, I I think the way, you know, we can all kind of wish it had gone a different way, and there'd been more transparency and communication with the folks that have done so much work to help us define what what the skate park looks like. I'm hopeful that we can continue to incorporate their input. And I guess where I'd like to know is for the points that Minty brought up, those four points in there, and I I don't know what, how I'm in front of me, are those points that you feel like you can incorporate into kind of a an agreement with the SOS folks and follow those things? You have? I mean, he sent them out.
I I can ask.
I mean, maybe you put them up there on screen. I guess you've read them, I'm sure. Well, yeah, and so I guess that's my question is can we, can you incorporate those?
He wants to review the red lines or be involved in SOS would like to be involved with red line. What do you think about that?
Well, and and I'm actually glad we're discussing this because that was part of the conversation that we had had on July fifth with Minty. Adam came, and then it was between American Ramp Company. So Maddie and Nathan were present on that meeting. And that was one of the things we discussed. And the answer was absolutely. What we talked about and in the summary of the meeting was that, of course, there's the the design is ninety-five percent complete. There are some elements that they are worried about, like the bowl, for example. Binti had mentioned that the Esteban Estacada wasn't necessarily friendly to all.
Can you hear better?
Sorry. Yeah, so we made a commitment absolutely that we were gonna set up a meeting with American Ramp Company. So the skaters of Sandy could put some of those final elements or tweaks on certain aspects of the skate park that would make it a better experience for everybody. So that was a yes. I think the second element was, what was the the second?
Consideration of local artisans and craftsmen.
Oh, yeah.
How does that work?
Yeah, so that was the discussion that we talked about too, as far as the one contractor building both of the elements. And so we we talked through basically the the same things that we've talked about today and were in the staff report. And then the third was.
They made a comment in that that there were identified some, some of the people that were listed were local. Is that part of this topic that would be approving that would include then some local craftsman or not?
So part of what you would be, today you would be approving American Ramp Company to construct the skate park and pump track and the skate park build group would include some of those folks that Minty had mentioned.
So so he was correct. Some of those local artisans would be included as subcontractors to A R C.
Folks that they know, yes. They would be required to use them. Well, so what is in the contract is what was guaranteed as the construction group that's coming in to build the skate park. So yes, or it would be a breach of contract.
The one of those, one of those contractors is known as Justin Dow as a local shop great company owner. The others are just names. I'm not sure if they are. They were vouched for by a couple of.
Last question was.
Site, site review.
Yeah, site review, feedback, being able to.
Yes, so we also discussed that in the meeting. And one of the things that if, you know, if there's citizens that are interested in building that construct or visiting a construction site, that's absolutely something we could check into, figure out what the liability of it is. I think it would be great, like in Minty and I've talked about this, having some eyes of professional folks that are skaters to take a look at some of the construction as it progresses. We did talk about the the realistic expectations of what his hopes are as far as visiting weekly and basically becoming, you know, an onsite weekly visitor where I don't, I'm not sure we would allow any other citizens to do that, but there are options to have them visit. We did talk about that, and there's a commitment to do that too.
Or for you guys, that's my way for a dollar.
I'd like to come back to that one. Well, the last one was robust involvement for future planning and events.
Yep. We did a hundred percent talk about that and that we talked about fundraising for shelters. We talked about what options for programming could we have down there? So we, that is, that's a given. Yeah, that's it. That's one that we can absolutely do.
For it. Well, I've got got some concerns with the direction that this is going. If we're awarding a contract to a company, I don't hire you to do a job and then let Carl come in and tell you how to do that job.
That's been telling me all along.
That's because I'm smarter than you are.
So I I feel like we're opening ourselves. So I guess I'm concerned that they're, that we're trying now that we want to award a contract to somebody, but then we want to open the door.
Not necessarily. I wanted, I asked early that the objective for tonight be expanded to address the comments. And so I was curious for the response of the comments. I'm not advocating a position one way or the other.
Got you. Okay.
I'm still a little confused. I just want to clarify a couple of things. We only had one bidder.
Yep.
For this project.
Yeah.
And then this one bidder is going to design and build or just design or just?
They have done the design, and they're going to do the build portion of it now.
So the contract that you're asking us to approve is for?
Build portion, correct.
And then, in your opinion, is, in all the research you've done, because I've done that, is is one bidder, you feel comfortable with awarding this project and the scope of it to that company? Where I came from, I would extend, I would just call it a failed improvement and extend it out because I want multiple so I can see what I'm comparing. And I'm not talking about local or national or global. I've just, you've only got one. So how do we know? Can you just help me reassure me where your position is on that?
Yeah, so the answer is yes confidently that it's a company that will be able to come in and provide a quality skate park and pump track and jump line based on research that, again, just checking references, making sure that the quality of work is there, that the follow through, what kind of work have they done in the past? Again, double checking the square, the cost per square foot. Because the last thing I wanted to do is make sure we had such a tight budget coming into this that, again, being a steward of the taxpayers' money, are we getting a fair deal here? And are we gonna get quality? And and I can confidently say yes. And one of the unique characteristics of American Ramp Company is that they are one of the, one of the companies, and there are other out there that can build the UCI pump tracks. And so when I reached out to other skate park companies in hopes that they would apply, they didn't. And so there was an effort. And so in in summary, yes, I I I do think we're gonna get a really good product. It's gonna be well worth what we're spending and the best way to move forward with it.
One last follow up. So thank you for that, because I trust you and I trust the work that you do and your team does. So that reassures me. And then to the point earlier is we have groups in Sandy that wanna help participate in the ongoing process. And I've heard you say is you're open and willing to facilitate that as we move through this.
Yes, yes. So one of my philosophies as a director too is that we're stronger together. And so if we can network and partner and work with nonprofits, there's, there's businesses and groups out there that can do things better than we do. And that's part of the last year and a half. And with our focus of our department has really tried to do is engage and expand our network. And this would be one of those opportunities to accomplish fundraising for certain elements that we couldn't afford in this this first phase. So, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've got a couple of concerns and a couple of, I'm sure feel more comfortable about some of the things that we're discussing here. The concerns, I guess, first is that I'm listening to.
Uh, the concerns, I guess first is that I'm listening to some of our local folks who are really want to be involved and want to stay involved. And we would look to them in the future for additional work, maybe even maintenance, maybe construction of different additional projects within the. Park that we would want to do as new grants come in. And I guess I I really do want to make sure that we incorporate them into however this goes forward, however the council decides to go forward. Uh, it really would bother me to just not involve these people in in some format so that they feel like they're being heard. Um, they're the experts, they're the locals, all the folks that are certainly going to be using this park as much as anybody might. And we're probably bringing in different sports events and those kind of things. So I I'm really wanting to make that happen. And make sure that that it does. And it sounds like you have a stance to discuss that with them. So I'm really pleased that way. I just want to make sure and firm that we are getting that to their place. Secondly, the, the other concern I have is is we're already short. Uh, on this contract, we're probably a hundred and fifty and knowing how public contracts go, there's. And we've done this with the wastewater project, there'll be overages and all the rest. So breaking it up, making it more expensive. Just puts me at risk that thinking that we may not be able to afford the next set of projects that need to be done here. And quite frankly, I'm, I am, no, we're not going to wait, not going to do the playground at this time. We're going to do it in the future. If that same money that's being used and designated for that gets used up in overages for the jump line. The skate park and and the trails and such, it just makes me concerned about what might happen on the next set of round of contracts. So those are the concerns I have. Um, I am like Chris, I am um more confident. That after you explain to your, this group about how the. Uh, look was, how the connections were with SOS and the rest and folks. That helps me to say I'm really looking forward to moving forward on it. I have to say I'm a little bit conflicted here and I'm not sure exactly how I would vote at this point. I I would like to see a couple of bidders at this point and see what we're going on. I'm, I'm not sure this is the most convenient time to be putting out contracts. This is the beginning of the summer. A lot of the contractors are really committing themselves. They wouldn't have been. Um, able to submit a bid if it might have been, say, submitted in December or something or November. When things are slowing down and people are looking for bids and such.
Church, already you're out for destruction.
I'm not saying I wouldn't say, say yes, but it just seems like we're in the long time for it to get out.
Hey, I just have a real quick question. Uh, when you said you reached out to these other, these other companies that do similar work as this. They give any feedback on why they didn't submit bids?
I didn't hear back. Um, and if I may, um, councillor Exner, um, just, uh, you know, to to drive home the, the comments about partnering. We're, we're talking a lot about skating tonight, but the other thing that I want to make sure that we talk about too is the bike portion of it. And we are currently as department partnering with a local uh bike enthusiast who's teaching youth. Um, jumping classes for mountain biking. It was actually at the Long State Parkway or excuse me, the um, the parade for the mountain festival. And so we're already making those connections and and that's the other thing. Um, so we're already putting efforts into those types of partnering. And this, this individual's been committed to maintaining and working through it. So.
Two, two parts to the question. Just wanted to reply to the timing and because we've talked about design documents, the question was asked, are design documents done? Design documents are done at different levels at different iterations, correct? So the design documents that are done right now are not the same as the ninety percent construction design documents. That will be done prior to the landings, is that correct? So that's one of the reasons you're doing contact now so that we get to that ninety percent or thereabouts for the specialty as it goes into the landings. And then the broader part will, general construction would be left in. Is that the timing, the general, the bigger?
Yes, so those two will be when the invitation to bid goes up with the general contractor, the two will be married. And then they'll.
And what's the timing of that?
The, the invitation to bid for the general contractor will go out in um probably October, September, October.
And that's for land, you're correct.
Yes, September is land use. Yep, yep. Um, and then the other thing too that um I, and I alluded to it in the staff report. But there was a, and it was, it was good to hear some of the comments from the skaters, but there was a really robust um, you know, a public engagement piece. To get to the skate design and um it was virtual. There was some in person. We had a bike one. Um, a couple of bike meetings and so really made an effort to get to that design. And I know A R C had several meetings and I don't have the exact in front of me. Just one-on-one meetings with Minty and Minty was sending them information. So it was, it was quite a lot of work to get to that ninety-five percent design that specialty contractors would build off of.
The second part of that question, second question actually, step two in a row here, is I am very supportive of. Having our skaters of Sandy heavily involved. Uh, you made the comment that maybe it would. We wouldn't allow any citizen to come over to the side in point time. Are they part of the committee right now? Does skaters of Sandy have a seat on one of these advisory committees associated with the park?
No, there's no, um, no active advisory committee right now.
Have we ever going to create one and advisory?
No, there was focus groups and that they were part of the focus groups that created that design.
So the second part of that is, I, I would love you, just like Carl, I'd love you to figure out how to incorporate them. So that we have this partnership going forward for the long term. That's it for me. All right. I'm very supportive of looking for.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the award of the public improvement contract to American Ramp Company for the construction of the action sports elements. And the community campus park project.
Uh, there's motion by councillor Smallwood and a second by councillor Exner. All those in favor. I'm sorry, sorry, a second by councillor Holkinson. Uh, yeah, I can open up discussion.
Yeah, I just want to add, is our, are folks open to amendment that would also add that the four points? That were discussed tonight get adopted as part of that.
No, I don't, I don't like to combine them. I love it in the minutes.
All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Thank you.
Let's build the park.
So moving ahead, we have our city council rules revision resolution.
Thank you, Mayor. Few slides here, but we don't need to really go through everything exhaustively, but happy to have this discussion. As the council is aware, revision of the, re- revision of council rules has been on our to-do list for quite a long time. Um, I've been pleased to work with the mayor as well as councillor Hokinson and more recently councillor Sheldon. Uh, on reviewing this and the plan for a long time has been to use the League of Oregon City's model council rules. As a baseline uh and then to sort of tailor that document for the use of Sandy. And that is indeed what you have in front of you today. Um, so just very briefly before we kind of go through these points. Um, again, the approach was to use the L O C model rules as a, as a baseline. And then there were several uh categories of edits that you see. Um, whether that was to um tailor those rules for Sandy. So um ensuring consistency with our city charter, for example, the way that we adopt ordinances in Sandy. Those, those edits were made. There were also edits to the model rules from L O C that incorporate important elements of the existing rules. An example would be language about council requests for staff policy research, things of that nature. And then there are also just minor uh changes, changing city administrator to city manager, things like that. There is an exhaustive uh change log uh that is in your packet. I'm definitely not going to read through this. Uh, we tried to be exhaustive uh so that you could see. There, uh, so the way to interpret this change log is topics that were in the model rules. If they're not mentioned in this change log, it means they were retained as written. Um, everything that was addressed in the existing rules. Is included in here and you can see what happened with it. So uh, Mayor, should we just jump into just these brief slides?
Are they brief?
We can go as fast as you like.
They look, they look full.
So I guess the last thing I would say is the last time the council um reviewed this material was about a year ago. So the first few slides you'll see are those topics that were addressed on that day. Uh, the first one was public statements representing the city. Um, on page twenty-five with new rules and what?
Is the new statements, right? I'll be on the screen.
That's correct.
So we're just seeing the new state.
Yes, what you're seeing on the slides here is the new language. Um, the, basically what the subcommittee recommended here. Was um just to kind of simplify this and to make the distinction clear between comments representing the city versus uh personal opinions. Uh, there was some discussion about this last time. And so as you can see the language there. Um, if you are giving only your personal opinion, um, it is incumbent upon the councillor to state that their statements do not necessarily represent the position of the council. Um, and so it's just a more straightforward way of presenting this.
Would anybody have heartburn if we scratched the word necessarily?
Where, or do not represent?
Yeah, because I mean, if you're giving your personal opinion. You're not, I'm giving my personal opinion. I'm not representing the council.
Well, well, what they're trying to get at though, I think is sometimes it does represent.
Yeah, and I think the word necessarily needs to be there because like five of us may agree with that statement and a couple of us may not. So.
So if we've never even discussed it and I'm out there talking to somebody, I'm okay just saying that statement.
It's no different than before, like a television show where they say scenes may not necessarily reflect, you know, whatever, right? I think that word should be there.
Or make it so it.
Or bioengineered.
Okay, uh, next slide, council interactions with staff. What the subcommittee recommends on this one is basically just using the model rules language verbatim. So there was some discussion about kind of tailoring it and after I think some back and forth, it just felt it was easier just to use the council rules. Uh, language that's in the model. Um, this, I I did a little bit of research on this. You know, the, the bullets that you're seeing in front of you here are reflected verbatim in many cities' council rules because this is a complicated subject. So the subcommittee committee just recommends using this model language.
It seems like a simple thing to write until you actually start.
I still want to be able to talk to staff members. You can be able to do that, but interrupting their day-to-day operations, you need to stay out of.
If this stays at the principal level, so if somebody becomes a problem. Then you potentially need to have to change this, right? Uh, I like that it's kind of just the behind.
I should point out, um, there is one sentence that was an addition that was based on the conversation the subcommittee had, and that is the last sentence in subsection A. If council members wish to express specific concerns regarding staff, they should address their concerns to the city manager. So that's an addition. Okay, decorum. There um was initially, or I think a year ago, there was some discussion about drawing upon the code of conduct for boards and commissions. And I think ultimately the subcommittee thought it was, it just made more sense to focus on um. Conduct within council meetings, not trying to get outside of council meetings, just sort of leaving that alone and just uh using this sort of basic straightforward language here. Uh, it's simpler. It doesn't attempt to address the outside of meeting conduct. Any questions on this one?
Yeah, would it apply to just the general conversations within the council meetings itself? For example, tonight, we had some language that in my mind bordered on concerning things. Would that be influenced by these statements?
There is.
Mayor would want to step in or somebody.
I think does require the mayor to preserve decorum and that's across the board.
We just want to make sure it's the thought known specific to the entire council meeting, not just those of us here on the podium.
Yes, I think, I think subsection A would. Would refer to. And and there is a sub, there's a subsequent section on the role of the sergeant at arms, right, in an extreme situation. Council liaisons. Uh, so now we're moving beyond the discussion from a year ago. Uh, into some discussions that were held during the goal setting in, I think, February of this year. Uh, there was discussion about the council liaison process. Uh, so the language that you see here sort of clarifies the appropriate time. Um, for individuals to participate in a board commission meeting if they are not the liaison. Um, that the appropriate time to participate is during the public uh comment process during that meeting. Unless they are requested to do otherwise, that the presiding officer of that board commission.
Great question on this one. So our economic development committee, I know it's had various iterations of folks. But I think it's had the mayor, Jeremy, who was a councillor, you were on it, Carl. Um, so how does, you, you're on it now, right? Yeah, so I don't know anybody else, but you know, so how does that committee work with this?
If I go and unless the committee has a public testimony window or they invite me to participate, I'm there as a passive vice. But I'm not on that committee, so use me as an example.
But I think we've also asked all of our advisory committees to have a public, public comment section. They all should.
And they, with our, with the implementation of our new meeting software, that has now been incorporated into every agenda.
But my question is that, and you know, this is not necessarily to put it here, but I think it's to talk about the economic development committee. Is that we have council members voting on that board unlike any other board. And so that's kind of a little bit of a horse of different color, so to speak, and just probably needs to be dealt, you know, addressed somehow.
This is referring to non, non-committee members. So city councilor or not, if you're, if you're, if you're a city councillor but not of the Aison to that committee. You're just not part of it, whether it's economic development, planning commission, library, whatever it is, you're, you're just a bystander.
But in the rest of our committees, we'll, the, the city councillors there are as, they're as liaisons, not as voting members of the committee.
But that's different than what this is talking about. This is talking about if you're not a liaison.
I understand.
And you're outside of that, but you're, no matter what you're sitting in, you're just part of the public. You can only speak during that public section. It's not talking about whether.
That I, I don't disagree with that. I think everybody's kind of dancing around what I'm actually saying.
It is. I mean, I don't think it's, I don't think we addressed that in the rules right now at all. I think that's in the separate ordinance we passed on how these councils and committees work.
I guess I would ask by law, with what you're saying, what are you trying to get at with that? But I mean, because in economic development, you have two councillors that are voting. What, I mean, what, what, what does that have to do with this part?
I'm just wondering, you know, why we don't have that model on, on our other committees. Because what the, the, the approach that we've used with our other committees, just let me give you an example. I used to be the chair of the parks board. And Jeremy was on the parks board and he used to vote and we, you know, and then it kind of got to be an issue with, I don't know how it all got to be an issue. But at some, some point, there was a decision made that the city councillors be participating on a advisory or there as liaisons. And not as voting members. No, the only exception is the.
Yeah, was an exception. It's in the bylaws.
But you guys, but this has. That's nothing to do with this.
Yeah.
And whether you're a liaison or an appointed committee member who happens to also be a councillor, you're either part of the board. Or you're not part of the board. And if you show up to participate in a meeting and you're not a member of the board. And if you show up to participate in a meeting and you're not a member of the board, then you have to participate in public comments.
Totally agree. I have no problem with that. That's not what I'm raising an issue now.
I'm moving on.
Real quick, Jeff, do we, do we just, do we need to add or is it addressed, I can't remember the, when you give a public statement, right, that you have to say, hey, this does not reflect that, do we need to say something similar to that in here? That this doesn't reflect the, the view of this, if you, if you appear as a member.
Yeah, if you do show up to these, if I go to the parks board and say, hey, I want X, Y, and Z, do I need to say ahead of time that my views, I'm here as a public and my views don't do that? I couldn't remember what the last one said.
I mean, I think, I think that would be the case, yeah.
I think you should.
I think it should be, I think just some of that verbiage should be in here.
So I'm going to say two things, one is if it's there or not, the reality is if you do, it does.
It does.
And that's something we just have to be very cognizant of. In other words, there are times when I'd love to be part of the economic development, but I don't think it's, because that's not my role, I would influence just by being there which changes the discussion.
I think that's the whole piece of what this one is working his way toward, because there have been in the past where specific councillors are very influential in terms of some committees. And that's not fair because the, some of those decisions belong here in this room rather than individual councillor affecting that particular committee. Just for me, it happened a lot when I was on the AR committee, they were, they needed somebody to talk to them about what's going on. And I just jumped in and I influenced them quite heavily. But I'm sure there are other people who have a lot of ownership, a lot of desire, passion for certain committees. And we do affect those committees just by being there.
So do we have to, in order to prove this, do we have to?
I mean, I, I, I think it's, if, I can't remember again, I can't remember what the first one said, if it's covered up there, that's fine. If not, I take a quick statement in there. See, I really, if you don't mind going back, it may be addressed. I just. I just think, yeah, I mean, when the council member represents the city before, representatives of another government entity, this or, or organization, to me, a committee, one of our government committees.
Sometimes the la, the language is flexible on purpose.
Yeah, fair enough.
Love it. Okay, sorry. No, we didn't. Yeah.
And I just have a question, I want to follow what Kathleen was saying, we don't need to do right now. I would love to know why there was a change in voting on some committees and not on other committees. And maybe we table that for another discussion or we send an email following.
Yeah, and we can put that in a session, but long story short is not all committees start at the same time. There's different reasons that, you know, just the way life goes.
But we standardize. With this incentivization.
Yeah.
It's hard to let go sometimes.
Happy to follow up with that. All right, so we have, uh, okay, and this also came up during goal setting in February. There was some discussion about questions in advance of meetings. And after some back and forth, I think the sort of consensus of the council during goal setting was that if a council member has a question pertaining to an item on an upcoming agenda, that email that they send to staff should CC the entire council. So the council is aware that this question is out there and staff are working on a response.
See, this never happens.
It doesn't ever now.
That's what I mean, this never happens.
It'll be in the rules now.
No, it was in the rules before and it was the responsibility of the staff to.
To respond all.
To, to CC any response or the questions to the city council. And so now we're saying it's not the staff that's going to do that, it's, it's the councillors.
Yeah, there was some discussion about this during the goal setting, I recall there was discussion about if staff, if, so what is currently, so councillor Walker's scratch, what's currently in the rules is that the staff is supposed to CC the rest of the council and their response. Uh, that hasn't been happening either. I know there was discussion back in February about that sometimes the staff in an uncomfortable position or they don't want to embarrass anyone or do any, or there was, so there was, there was some concern about that. And so I remember we had a back and forth about this, this was where we landed, I believe.
It spawns online all the time, doesn't, doesn't.
I, this is just one of these things that is a little sticky. Uh, I think this is where the consensus resulted back in February, so.
Does this include texts?
Otherwise, it's written for just email. Well.
The same sort of. If we're going to keep this, I think we should have the word council in front of the board meeting agenda. Because that's what it was implied as councils, unless it's, unless it's clear from the context of the call. So.
There are purpose here, I wonder, uh, I know sometimes questions get asked that create fair amount of time constraint on time, impact on staff members. I guess that a few times, some of the questions would have been very impactful, maybe at the last moment. Sometimes I get stuff, I don't look at it till Friday afternoon. Is that what this is about, guys on the committee? As well, but just that time, or is it just making sure everybody understands the same response?
This came out of goal session, yeah.
The context of this within the rules councillor is, is more about, I think, it, it, it's a staff time issue, I think, in the context of the rules, just making sure that the, and I think the, the other part of this is that for the council to be able to have a pulse on how much the council is, you know, asking questions of staff, they don't know unless they're CC'd on the questions or the responses, otherwise there's no way, no. And so I think that's just part of the rationale for doing something like this.
So let me make a comment, if we leave this as is and burden is on us to CC and we don't do it, you know, it's going to flag on it until staff raises, you know, a red flag.
I think the, for me, you know, we get our packets Friday or so and Thursday sometimes, but sometimes Friday. And so anyway, anyway, okay. I'm sorry, so Thursday, um, so again, then if, unless we get to it right, right on the, because a lot of times it's late Thursday, so if we don't get on it right away on Friday, then, then it's the weekend. And so then what I, you know, for me, I have some questions about some of the stuff that's presented that's, you know, and I, and I, a lot of times my questions are very good questions that if I don't understand it, and I understand a lot of stuff, then probably some of you don't understand it, so it's fair to kind of ask and, and what, and my, my reason for asking the questions with an email is just give them a heads up that, hey, I'm just curious about this. Could you deal, could you address this in your presentation? Because I don't want to sit up here and wait till Monday night and ask a very good question like that. And then they say, well, I didn't have time to, you know, come up with an answer.
And I, and I think that's a good point, Kathleen, and I do think that you ask good questions and I don't think this deters from that. But what it does do is if, when you ask those questions, if you CC'd all of us on there, then if I have that same question, I'm not also emailing staff the same question because I know the question's already been asked.
Right.
So I think, you know, I say, yeah, ask your questions, just CC all of us when you ask it and then we know.
But the warning I would throw up to everyone here is depending on what the answer to that question is, we can't have Kathleen then going back or Dawn pitching, well, what about this? And I always said, because now we're, we have a meeting.
Right, that's, but that's why, that's why I think you asked the question and I think it's great that staff then just addresses it in the meeting and says, hey, this question was asked and here's the answer. They don't need to email us back, I don't feel, so.
That's very strong point.
Yeah, and so, and then that gets rid of that, but then it also keeps us from asking redundant questions.
Let me make sure I understood what you just said. So you're saying that if I just say, would you please address these issues or these questions?
Yeah, just CC us all, yeah.
You want to see, see, I, I, I'm okay with this, I just feel like it's the staff's job, you know, to, to just send it out, not.
I will point out, the way it's phrased, it's a question. What does this mean?
Right.
Opposed to, will you address so and so? That's not covered by this section.
True.
Right, that's just the way it's phrased.
Correct.
But if I don't understand something, true, what is the value of blah, 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 blah?
Right.
That's a question that could CC there.
Absolutely.
Right, that's right. One thing I might point out, Mayor, if that's okay, is, and I was having a discussion with the city attorney about this earlier today. It's been, I think it's been eight years since the council's updated the council rules. Um, I'll go out on a limb and say that's a long time and probably better to kind of update these things on a more regular basis. We already have a list going of edits to make, I'm, I'm, I'm being. So, so it may be, it may be that if we, we can kind of try some of these things out and we already have a list going of edits to make next time. So I just wanted to put that up there.
Good.
So it's.
It's very difficult.
All right, let's move ahead and see what else we got here.
Okay, so combine some things, these are pretty self-explanatory. The subcommittee is recommending giving a little, an, an extra hour to sign up for virtual public comments. That's just in terms of facilitating more public comment. There is a distinction in the rules now between public hearing comments versus regular public comments, giving five-minute limits during.
At least one of us rolled in or is supportive of that back already.
Yeah, so why? Can anybody tell me why?
Yeah, because you struggle, like, like, just like the gentleman that was up here.
That was the one.
Well, I mean, yeah, we, we have an example of the one, we also have an example of someone that, you know, three minutes goes by like that when you're trying to formulate an argument. And I, and I understand that you can submit your paperwork, it doesn't have the same effect. And, and how often, I mean, do we really get people to come up here and stand and talk to us? I mean, I've been on this for going on four years now and I think the past two meetings has really been the only time.
So.
So.
When do we change our rates?
Yeah, absolutely, there's going to be times, there's going to be times, but honestly, let them, let them talk for two more minutes of their, of their time.
I did that today, using the ability to ask questions to give them an extended period of time while still cutting off, I did that today.
Well, I guess I, I would like, I would like to ask two questions. One is, my concern, my concern in five minutes while I hear your point and do you think it's valid? Is in the event that we do get a room full of people, now you're talking up to an hour of public comment, right?
But you can also always, and you can go both ways.
But I guess where I'm, where I'm going is why not, why not create something, we don't always acknowledge this. Now, sometimes, sometimes you do if we have a room full of people, but that, hey, you can yield your time to someone else and thereby they get more time. Like, Peck, Peck didn't speak very long, she could have yielded her time to her husband, you know? And so I guess I'm just throwing that out there, that there's that as opposed to extending the time.
Well, I, I was just going to say, and I hear what you're saying, because he was up there, he kind of comes, it was like, oh, great, what a great night to reference for three minutes, right? But as I'm sitting here listening to him, I, I honestly feel like for the, he was able to articulate his opinion and his thoughts enough to get some follow-up questions, uh, to get all of us to perk up. I mean, he utilizes three minutes. But we're not, in my mind, we're not doing that, yes, he got his, he got the gist of his point across, but he also said, I don't feel hurt. Okay, right, and, and I'm sorry, man, when you run for this office, whatever it is, like, your job is to listen. Like, out of everything that we can do, two minutes more per person on the few times this room is filled, I don't think is too much. That, that's my, that's, that's the last, the thing with yielding though, um, this is what I would see to the repercussions of that, is you could fill a room with a bunch of people that are, because there's a lot of people that aren't willing to talk, right? Um, and you could fill a room in here and next thing you know, that person's up there giving you a lecture for an hour and a half. And that, and if everybody yielded their time, I, I could see that being kind of strung out a little bit. But if you're willing to get up there and talk and kind of go and, and have that nervous moment, I, I kind of want to hear what you have to say for another two minutes, just my thoughts.
Because they're contentious and issues and usually the folks up there testifying are not extremely articulate about what they're talking about.
So just for clarity, the, so what the subcommittee is recommending is five minutes for public hearing testimony, but retaining the three minutes, we're just.
I guess I'm, I'm wondering why the mayor couldn't say, well, we got a room of thirty-five people and seventeen of them want to be able to talk. Tonight, we will have to reduce it to three minutes. You got three people in the audience and only one.
Yes.
Why not give them five minutes? I'm with you, they take the bravery to get up there, I know it takes a lot of guts to.
Prepping my speech to get up here and talk for five minutes.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I was just pointing out on page five, it references your discretion as the presiding officer.
If that's in there, if that's in there, then I'm okay with it. I mean, not that I wasn't okay with it, I was playing a little argument, you know?
But you're, you're right, but I mean, I guess.
She's got my support again.
Now, on that subject, though, when they get up to speak, they do need to stay on topic. Right? When they're not on topic, I think, I think that.
We have to be careful about them re-engaging, I mean, I.
Well, and that's my point, right, is there's black and white, but then there's also the finesse of like reality and really like, you know, like today with public testimony that we had tonight, you know, it was, it was, it was obvious it was starting to rat to its conclusion. We have, we have two, you know, officers here, if it gets, you know, too extreme, it's kind of, it's trying to politely it move forward in the meeting without being too heavy-handed and then it blows into something that doesn't need to blow into.
So was the consensus there to keep the recommended language, but also just rely on the presiding officer's discretion in certain cases to give more, more than three minutes?
I think, which is to keep the proposed line.
Right, right, yeah. Oh, you know, councillor Sheldon asked a good question, but speaking of the sergeant at arms, so there's language now, the previous language referenced, well, do you remember, it was like crimes in the municipal code and municipal code. So this cleans that up and refers to disorderly conduct as the state law, so in extreme cases, obviously. Any other questions about this slide? We're near the end here.
So just to carry really quickly, I don't want to make this any longer than I have to, but I've watched some other city council in Portland in particular, where they really do come in pretty aggressive. We have the ability to slow that stuff down or stop that, right? We start seeing some problems and I'm thinking about language, I'm thinking about somebody pushing somebody around or being so aggressive, they knock them back.
It goes to that first rule of, of presiding officer's ability to force decorum and that's why we have Chief Roberts here, yeah.
Who's got out.
Okay.
Quite a big thing that wouldn't be my first go to.
Just very briefly, this one's pretty straightforward. Clarification that, uh, so contact with parties to a confidential negotiation will be made by staff and the council members will not have contact pertaining to the subject of an executive session with those parties, so. This.
Reach out to.
This was actually in the existing rules.
It had to do with if we're, if we're negotiating for a purchase of something, that as councillors, we're not privy to the negotiation part. We don't insert ourselves into the deal.
Well, it also had to do with like, and I'll just be blunt, I wouldn't, when the CCPOA was negotiating the Sandy police contract, there's no, by the old way, I would have been in violation because there's no way I'm not going to have contact with that organization. Now, I can't discuss what we discussed in here with them, that's fine, but our other, our other language was that I wasn't allowed to have contact.
Right.
Pertaining. To the subject of that.
I think it would be the same thing if I was involved in selling that property, we were discussing prices and such, which kind of is going on right now with the selling of pretty roachy property.
Moving ahead.
Yeah, uh, also very straightforward. The subcommittee recommends actually writing down in the council rules, the benefits that councillors receive over to their positions, so that is the local fitness facility membership and also the sending that gigabit fiber service, so that's now on page thirty. And yes, I thought that was the last one, so that's it, cool. Happy to answer any other questions, Mayor, or?
I think we're good, what, what are you asking us to do to adopt these here tonight?
That is staff's recommendation, yes.
And then to that, just a reminder, if we go through this, is that to just point, we don't have to wait eight, forty years, you know, to revise, you know, a, a section of it as, as things come up. This is just trying to do a big chunk here. Is there discussion questions or?
Look good to me.
I'll make the motion, I move to adopt resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-nine.
For a second.
A second. Let's say motion by Council Sheldon, a second by Council Smallwood. All those. You didn't make.
No, go on. No, I did not.
Smallwood, all those are favored, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nays. Motion carries.
No, I need you. I have related this into the agenda if I can. If not, I'd like to say something and see if we can either present on the next.
Just saying aloud and then I'll see.
So the planning commission had a had a a vote on a division, uh, and what they wanted to do is ask me to bring to the city council. If we could make a motion to make the majority of SDCs for parks for a board step park, which is where this division is being built. And I have a motion that they've asked me to present to the to the city council. And as a liaison, I said I would bring it forward. And so I wanted to share with you.
They are so out of order right now. I want to hear more about it, but it's it's why we have committee council reports.
Oh, what? I did not want to do that enough because I didn't know if that was something I should do there, or if I should make it an agenda item.
Sure. No, I just, I just play with Chris. I I think we can put it in committee and council report since you reported out as your liaison. Um, I I don't think it has to be officially posted to an agenda to entertain a motion. Um.
Depending on how controversial.
I mean, the Deer Point neighbors would have a little.
Yeah.
So I assume we'd want them.
So let's let's bring it up and then have a conversation on adding it to our next agenda. Yep.
Can't let it get into too much detail, so.
You're good, man. Thanks. Um, all right, moving ahead. Report from our city manager.
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments and a couple of quick questions for the council. Um, no, no, no. First, uh, update. Last Wednesday was the first concert in my new park of the season. It's a great turnout, somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty. Um, attendees. My family was there. My daughter is a big Fleetwood Mac fan even at three years old, so she was dancing around the park and only had one meltdown that resulted upstairs.
Tomorrow.
Otherwise, it was a a great time for my family. Um, and then a couple of questions for the council. So the LOC conference coming up in October. Curious, um, who would like to attend this year?
Oh, my gosh, that's that term already?
Agreement yet, but.
Where is it at?
Eugene, Oregon.
Oh, boo.
October twelfth through fourteenth. There is an away game that Saturday, so.
Figure out why I had to win.
There's not a win-win scenario there for you, but. You know, if you don't want to make a commitment now, that's totally fine. Just reach out to Jeff or I so we can get you registered and.
For the record, I have, I have done the registration bookings, because if you don't jump on it, you know, so we can always cancel.
Yeah.
Did you say the twelve through the fourteen, sir?
Thank you. It's usually Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Can you? You have some little discussion of that, and this is something we should. Group tried to go to.
Oh, yeah.
Or, I mean, we did last time and most of us.
Yeah.
Should we try it again? Is it worthwhile?
Once.
I've only been once, so I don't know about the second, third experience or like.
Actually, it's the networking afterwards. Some of us try to drink a little bit. That makes our tongues a bit more looser, and sometimes those conversations are.
So Carl's going and he's checking.
Yeah. They're always good reminders. You always get updated on kind of what the hot policy issues are going on in different communities, so.
They kind of, yeah, yeah.
I promise not to get too. You can be my chef.
Yeah. Suppose one more question to the council. Um, we have talked a lot about an urban renewal goal setting since January of this year and and many times before that. I'm gonna bring it up one more time and get some feedback as to whether or not you'd like to do that sooner rather than later, or wait until there's a permanent city manager on board to sort of lead that discussion. Happy to do so either way, but just want to make sure we're, you know, meeting this group and their reports timeline on when they perceive that conversation to happen. Don't want to be dragging our feet if you have an interest in getting that underway now.
I personally think we should wait till we have a city, a permanent city manager.
Yeah.
Um, and then there's a couple of agenda items that that I think we should look at in one, one being, and I'll go ahead and step out. With the fire district being run by a separate entity, I think we need to ask ourselves that fire district should, if Sandy fires, should even be part of urban renewal moving forwards.
Sure.
Um, because that does, that seems like a complex of interests, so. And then what we should do with that.
I agree. Should discuss.
Yeah. Um, but as far as the quite, I agree. But as far as the question posed all this, it feels like I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads to wait until we have.
Yeah, the fall.
So for some reason, fall that way.
That's great. We'll do some behind the scenes work before then so that the new city manager reference that is, you know, is up to speed on it, and then you can get something scheduled for their own work.
So can I add to Lori's point a little bit? Because you got me thinking, I I don't know if we're gonna have any urban renewal decisions to be made in the future, but is that? Is that specific piece something that we need to address sooner than the composition of that? And also, I mean, would we be interested in replacing that before that goal setting? That way, whoever that new person is could also have input into those goals.
That's very good.
Kick them off the board. Well, well, they're right into the very core written into the core charter for their renewal.
My understanding, Josh could jump in on this, um, but I I believe it's just a simple resolution of the urban renewal board to modify the membership. It's an ordinance, or ordinance, I'm sorry.
Certainly, we ought to talk about who. It, we don't have elected official versus.
Yeah, most.
All that kind of stuff.
Agencies near their council. I mean, this is sort of from our sort of vantage point. It's. More on the uncommon side to have other members of other governing bodies or other nonprofit agencies as voting members on those boards.
Yep, and I agree with, I agree with that, because I would have some concerns with, um. The effectiveness or the desire, uh, moving forward of of what the Sandy Fire District would bring to urban renewal. With their limited. Action at this point.
Yeah, yeah, so I.
Yeah.
Maybe a work session to talk about.
Sure.
This initial.
Sure.
Issue.
Sure.
We could get that scheduled and then work through some of those questions.
Let's do that.
Okay, perfect.
That's a number.
So can I add to a little bit aside bar that sort of affects this? Well, we do have a brand new fire chief, and one of the things they've asked me more to do is bring him over here and get him introduced and all that. Somehow that could be, I don't know if that's appropriate to do the conversation, whether we like to. Have the fire board part of the river renew or not, but we have, we do have a new chief.
Jeff, why don't you reach out about, um, having them. Uh, come to a future council meeting and make a presentation.
Great.
That would be good.
But I don't think that's even discussed with the urban renewal.
No, completely separate.
Tell us about the new relationship.
And. And just the last item for me, uh, tonight was a really exciting night to see this initial contract get adopted for the development of some of the active features at the community campus. Um, we bought that property in twenty seventeen. It's been. Six years, six and a half years of talking about what we're gonna do and how we're gonna do it. So this is just a, it's a big night for the council to have taken that first step and and a real. Solid decision on what the vision of that's going to be in the future. So congratulations to you guys. I'm excited to. See what's coming next and congrats to Rochelle and Jeff for, for, you know, really diving in this first year and a half that you've been here and making some really big progress in our Parks Department.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, Don.
Thanks. Just kudos to Jenny and team for continuing to push this Portland water and all the rest of the water mess over. Do a good job. Rochelle, good job. Got some hard questions. I mean, this one obviously wasn't easy. Do encourage you to continue to try to. Create more partnership with with mentee where possible. I do think those adult community activists, long term, are going to be goal if we can. Keep them aligned and use them properly. The mountain days, fantastic. Um, now that it's gone, winter fest. It's a, I I felt as I walked through Mountain Festival that. In future mountain festivals, I want to see advertisements for the following, the follow on winter fest and a winter festival, the, you know, so that they self feed each other. We get people. Uh, look forward to more discussions on that. The. Also, passing on, I I said I'd look into finding some resources to rebuild the featured Atlantic Park. I have two very old retired and ready to go to work craftsmen that would would like to take that on, so. Reach out to me. I'll pass their names on to you and you're happy to take a look. Uh, it's been expressed a couple of times, but the forum and city meetings obviously are are one of our public. Commenters today was inappropriate, threatening a little bit at the end, and and I think it's. I I look to you to to try to tamp that down before it gets to that point. I don't know, you know, and it's not just him, it could be anybody, but people will come in here with whatever issues they may have, whether it's. Just stress about life or mental health issues, but we just need to be able to. Control it properly before it escalates. I think it's so critical to sympathetic presentation. Am I out of line?
No, you're not out of line. I just, I just, um. Certain individuals who who do have mental health problems, there's really no way to get ahead of that. And depending on how you handle that particular, and you guys handled it awesome, uh, you can escalate that very easily.
Yeah.
Um, and so, so that's that. That is my concern with with giving a lot of latitude to that particular individual, because that's where he's going to go. And and there's always the potential, like, this was minor.
Right.
Right? So, so I have some concerns about about him being here every meeting and wanting to talk because he's going to escalate and escalate and escalate. And I think there's other people in the room who will, who will share that.
I feel the same way. So my daughter, special needs.
I know.
And she's very similar in terms of her ability to escalate and get out of control. And to manage her, it's the same thing. You have to set very clear parameters, and as soon as you start edging near them, I have to remind her to very firm, unemotional voice. They're getting near a boundary. Calm it down, really. So anyway, I don't know.
Well, it's it's. Run away in that with.
Yeah.
Individuals' rights to.
Yeah.
Public speak.
Totally.
And I come and address their local city council too.
So I understand, and and obviously with the known quantity, it's going to be. Something we don't, so. And finally, chief, um. You guys did a great job. I missed it the last time in terms of the speed traps that that were coming that you did in town, and I've heard about it again on a couple of other times, so that's. Yeah, whatever. Show of force in enforcing the speed limit. I would ask and request that we do a really big focus similar on the red light running. The red light running is out of control. Trucks. Single and double trailer trucks are running red lights regularly, uh, at at Pioneer or Pioneer Proctor and the Tollgate, again, at the hardware. Um, mining intersection. And. I mean, this, you just, you don't have to ask too many people how many times the light turned green, you headed out and somebody flew past you. It's happening all the time. And I think we need to do something about it before somebody gets hurt. We actually did do one, just I'll I'll follow up a little bit, um, just just for a second. Uh, we did one at twenty-six and ten I recently, just like an on duty when we had a few extra folks on. And the works and having the calls in queue, we did that a little bit just on their ships. Now, we we do apply for ODOT grant to, uh, which will allow us to do more of these targeted enforcement. Uh, things, because it does cost us more time, but, you know, some of that is, you don't have a budget for that, so.
But I'm assuming you found some red lights.
Oh, yes, we did. Yeah, yeah. And and I'm so, what I'm getting at is, I'm pretty sure we're gonna get that grant to the ODOT, the ODOT grant. And this will help us in paying for those overtime hours. And my 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 folks enjoyed that because it's a little bit of a break from just, uh, taking calls for service and what they're normally doing. Of course, traffic duties are, that's part of what they do, but they don't always have the time. But they did enjoy it too, and they want to do more of it, so that's what we're. Thank you. That's it.
So Carl. Uh, just to add to a little bit with Don, um, the the mining and Wolf Street junction with twenty-six is also a pretty significant red light bypass and. Because that's where I come out a lot. There's many times the congestion of turning left from twenty-six onto. Ten Ike is getting more and more difficult, and I'm sure you guys see that all the time, chief, because that's where you get into your facility there. But it it just gets to the point where I've been more than a couple of times now, I've seen people just jacked up, waiting for somebody to turn into the seven eleven store, which is really not the seven eleven turn, it's more of the. Those coffee shops.
That's brother, yeah.
Yeah, and it just, um, they can stack them up, and they sit there and they sit there, and people are really starting to get a little bit frustrated, and I was one of them. Anyway. Go get them. Um, I did not attend the, uh, fire board meeting. It happened last, uh, it was Thursday, thirteenth anyway, and, uh. I set a chance to touch base with some folks and get some ideas there. Till I first was the first day of the new contract that started, so that we do have, uh, the chief. Moving from, I'm not sure exactly what Phil Schneider is now, but is the new guy, his name Nick Brown, is the new chief. Not stationed here in Sandy. Uh, they have some, as I understand it, several. Changes in in operation that caused some issues different times, but they are working on it, and they asked us to, if we do get an introduction with the new chief, that give them a couple of months to work out some of that stuff. Understand, Ria's. Family restaurant got burned on the inside to the point where there's nobody able to eat on the inside. They're trying to figure out a way to get a a. Card out front to be able to move, make that happen. Do they get a permit for that? I saw there's a card out front.
They're in the process of getting a permit. Staff's working closely with them.
I saw the card, so.
It's not kind of operational yet.
Okay. Thinking maybe. Pushing that a little bit farther than they need to. Um, I did attend the celebration for the sidewalk from. Ten Ike clear out to Vista Loop on the west end, and then really happy to see that happen. Um, the mayor mentioned that it was at one time one of the pedestrian. Highest safety issues in the town, and really glad to see we have it completed now and wish I had some lights on it, but. Except the fact that at least we have concrete all the way, so great to have that happen in Sandy. I just am really excited about seeing that. Uh, and one sort of conflict involves Michelle and Jenny a little bit, trying to figure out who mows what in the city is really difficult. I understand. Public Works and Parks have different responsibilities and, uh, trying to figure that out before the. The mountain festival happened to get the town looking a little bit neat. There are times, man, not sure who, and I'm not sure that we all know who. Do we have that all figured out?
I mean, I could rattle it off pretty quickly for you, but, um, you know, if you have a question about a a specific site, you can absolutely call or email me, and I can get you an answer, or I could just send out a collective response to the general. Areas of operation for each of those.
And it appears as if there's a difference in opinion about what. Maintain looks like.
Yeah, no specific.
I'm just thinking about the, on the west end of the, uh, where all the the green grass is on the old, uh. Waterfall looks beautiful perfectly, and then about block and a half later to the one across the street from university, and it's mowed about.
Yes, so the.
Gray, and I know there's water. I get worried about busy, you know, the rest, but.
East and west end of the couple are on track it out to a land leasing company, which is why those, you know, are water regularly mowed very routinely. It's actual. Grass and weeds that has blown in from neighbors shopries who they mow their lawns. You'll remember that we spent a pretty good chunk of money for the median, um, down close to three sixty-second on twenty-six. And, you know, unfortunately, I think a lot of the grass seed and weed seed and whatever else comes up from that neighboring field, when that's mowed, it's just killed everything else that's been planted there. You know, long term, um, an option to be working with ODOT to figure out what sort of, um. Hard surface could go there with art or something else on top of it that would still meet their crash requirements, but also maybe beautify the entryway into our community. Um, something I talked to some staff members about, but that's, you know, not our, um, median that we can just go and do some of that stuff in that requires coordinated effort with ODOT, so.
Yeah, my intent was not to solve the problem tonight. What Kent was established, there's a, it's like there's an issue. Yeah, my intent was not to solve the problem tonight. My intent was established. There's a, it's like there's an issue about consistency and maintenance. And so thanks for the comment and for that.
Um, the Travel Oregon folks have grant opportunities out for us. Um, they're between 20 and a hundred thousand dollars. And so I forwarded that to everybody. If they didn't get it, David's aware of it. And I just suggested that, you know, and it might be something to kind of discuss at our next meeting, but it's, the letter of intent is due early August. And I kind of see, we could be going with two possibilities there. The live cam thing at John's Review Point, there's a grant for that, just already almost already written that we've used before. Um, it would need updating for costs and stuff with Red Rooster. Um, the other one is to consider either the pump track or the part of the inclusive playground. Uh, as, as a feature that, um, would meet the criteria. So like I said, community campus or live cam, if there's any, um, comments or whatever, there might be an opportunity to. Get up to a hundred thousand dollars there. I think we have a good chance of getting. I'm thrilled with how Mount Festival went. It was a lot of fun to work. It was, I heard nothing but great comments back from everybody about that. Jeff, would you, can you, uh, see that, open the email I sent you? Call that up on the screen there, show the screen or whatever.
Sure.
Just wanted to.
And the, the other part is I, I kind of echo what Don said about the fact that, you know, we've got, we are so blessed with the experts that we have in this town that are. Yeah, finally. So this has kind of been one of those things that I've brought up quite often here for the last five years, but who's counting? Um, so the John's Review Point sign finally got redone and fixed and I'm thrilled. It would be great if we got just even just a couple of those cheap little solar, uh, spotlight signs for at night. Cause it looks wonderful. I really appreciate them taking care of that. Um, but getting back to the experts, like I said, we have such, uh. So many experts in, you know, skate parks and cup track, uh, riding and jump riding and, uh, trails and all these other ish, uh, areas of, you know, playground stuff. And we're so blessed to have those kind of folks interested in it. I really appreciate our opportunity to kind of collaborate with them and really make them part of the process. And. And, you know, things didn't go as well as they could have, but I know that there was an effort by the city to try to include everybody and be transparent. And I think that we just, you know, we just learn from, from doing and do even better the next time. As I join with what Tyler said about the fact that this is just gonna be such, uh, huge. Cool and groovy thing that we're gonna see there once it's built. It's just gonna be, um, kind of advertisement for the whole city. And the fact that when we all work together, we can get great things done. So thanks for everybody's work on it so far.
Rich. Uh, not a whole lot tonight. Um, the, I do want to say thanks for the mountain festival. As everyone else said, it was great. It was awesome. A lot of people. The Rochelle and as far as the parks, I thank you for doing that, including that. I think that was, that's a. Community input is super important. So I'm glad that you were receptive to that and appreciate that. But I also appreciate. The fact that we're doing it in a, uh, that you specifically mentioned that we're doing it in a way that we're valuing our taxpayer dollars. So thank you for that. As, I mean, we're spending two million dollars on. Track and, and skate park. I think we're showing our investment there. So thank you. That's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Lori. Uh, so, uh, Concert in the Park, Tyler mentioned it. Uh, it was, it was great. And I think there was a really good turnout. Um. The 26 will be the next one. Uh, Nate Bosford will be the headline. And if you guys aren't familiar with him, he's a local guy. Uh, he does do kind of, uh, country music. But he has done some recording in, uh, in Nashville. I believe he comes from Tiger. So it's kind of cool to get out and support a, a local act. Um. I did want to just kind of mention, you know, we, we talked a little bit about, uh. The skateboard and, uh, the local talent that we have. We do have a lot of talent and Minty has reached out to me a couple of times in the last few weeks. And I also just want to kind of caution us, these guys have a lot of passion and I get it and I, and I, I value that and I appreciate it. But I also want our, our staff, we are hiring a professional group to make a professional skate park and pump track. And I know there's a lot of passion from certain groups, but I also hear a little bit of it's our way or it's no way and we want it our way. And so I just want staff to make sure that they have the latitude to. Navigate that, how you see fit. And, um, again, I, I welcome their input, but they need, there also is a lane that, that, that needs to be stayed in. So. That's all I got.
Thank you, Lori. Chris. I will say thanks for the mountain festival too. I also wanted to say thank you to Rochelle for allowing me to ride in the back of your truck. I was supposed to be in the air conditioning front of a truck department and public works for the emergency for a city council. Uh, I took over their spot in the back of one of her trucks.
Thank you.
Great time.
Put you in that position.
We did run out of candy though at Mining Park. So got a lot of stairs from angry little kids. But it was, but I, I did it. I had fun and, and I did put my SPF, uh, 30 on. I did it. My last meeting was, uh, with the planning commission was June 26th. And so, um, I emailed this to the mayor and to Jeff and Tyler to put on the next agenda. But so, and this does not reflect my opinion at all. I have not considered it. So I'm just gonna share.
Thank you for that.
They approved a Cascade Creek mixed juice development. It's a, a mixed juice development that they approved. Off of two level of Porset, Porset Park. In that conversation, they were having, they were discussing that Porset Park never became the true vision of what it was supposed to be. So it's estimated that, that with this Cascade Creek mixed juice development, which is file number 23 dash zero three nine, if I go look it up. There's about 500,000 or half a million dollars. It's gonna be estimated to come in from Parks SDCs alone. So the planning commission was asking, would the city council, uh, consider a motion to make the majority, meaning 51% or more, whatever. Of that SDC for that development would be applied towards the Boardstep Park. Which is, you know, on that, in that development. So I don't know anything about Boystep Park. Maybe Rochelle could give us an update on what the vision was for it when it was built. Uh, but because of this mixed development coming in and gonna be generating a half a million dollars in SDC fees, the planning commission was asking the, the city council to, and I'll read the motion they wanted me to read. A motion to make a recommendation to city council that the majority of the parks SDCs collected from the Cascade Creek mixed juice development be used for improvements at Boystep Park. It was moved by the commissioner or the commission and it was voted, um, all A's from everyone. So, um, I've said that.
Couple things. One is I, I like to see, man, I, I love the new aggressiveness from the, from that committee. I, I really do. I, I, I like that. What I would suggest, I, I'd like to hear what other people think, but it sounds to me like this is a perfect place for our parks advisory committee. That maybe this is, this should be an item that goes to the next Parks Advisory Committee, um, as a topic, uh, for recommendation or council. We have them, you know. Uh, to get a recommendation from into our council. Is there something in the timing of this though, that I'm unaware of that makes that process too slow?
Well, as a previous planning commissioner, I don't think so.
Yeah, yeah, right.
It's all about the.
Yeah. The next Parks meeting will be in the middle of August.
Yeah.
But I, I'm just gonna say, I think there's a need for everybody to understand what the history of how much money has already been spent in SDCs and Boystep Park. How much even just, you know, the, the two shelters that we have. And there's neighborhoods in this city that have been promised parks for many years that are about to get 200 new apartments at a decision planning commission made even before this one. So. I, you know, I think it's helpful to kind of have the big picture. And that's why we have a Parks Master Plan with a project list and all that as to what priorities are and what the, you know, and all that. And I think it's, yeah, I don't, I, I hope we're not rushing into this. Yeah.
And I would agree. And I sat in that commission meeting with the planning commission. I just think they were best. They're gonna take a shot at it.
And I think, I think the Parks, I think the Parks Board definitely will take that into consideration. And I think Rochelle's writing it down. So.
See, to me, that's exactly what, that's exactly what our committee is supposed to be doing. Get the people to make suggestions and some of that back. I hope that they get some brief passion.
Yeah.
And comment to us, just like.
The master plan. That's the key part.
Yeah.
It's okay to change the master plan.
That's why it's important that the Parks Committee.
You know, like I said, Dear Point folks and all those other folks that have been promised stuff.
So just calling them.
All right. That's all I got. All right, cool.
I did have one. Go back.
Yeah, I was going back. Go ahead. Go.
Uh, Kiwanis Camp Cruisin is Sunday, this Sunday, the, the 23rd from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Oral Hall. Uh, that's the fundraiser that Kiwanis has to help do all the Christmas baskets, the Easter egg hunt and, uh, it's quite a few other, uh, scholarships and things like that. So if you are able to come down and look at some cool cars, then come on down and get some breakfast.
Awesome. It's great. And you like that. Uh, all right. Quick report for me. Uh, Mountain Festival was awesome. We all talked about that. A couple of things on this one is I think as Rochelle mentioned, they were already the Mountain Festival Committee, uh, kind of complimenting and exciting about the new electrification of the park, some of the stuff in there that, uh, that they were able to utilize. So it's helping out. Uh, Contras in the Park, I missed it, but I've heard great things. I did see some of it on camera though. So is that the new security kit? Is, was that what I was seeing on Facebook? Was that our new camera we have in there? Was that just, just somebody doing their deal? But we do have a security camera in the park now, right? So I would just, I don't know, as for back to kind of Kathleen's mentioning, I think mining should be one of those items maybe that we're, we're talking about with the. Winter Fest, the Mountain Festival. We are gonna put counters in the park though. Is that right?
We're looking at.
You know, would those be permanent or like, meaning that's gonna work for Mountain Festival as well as Winter Fest? Or is that just that we rent, we rent it for a while or?
Look at purchasing and then, uh, depending on what we did at purchasing, it could either be moved or permanent. So I can see how many people actually come through my head.
I think that's cool. Great. And then, uh, went to the kids parade. Um, you know, Clackebus County Bank does such a good job with, uh, hot dogs. We have our city staff out there doing everything. Our police department, uh, blocks off the road, Landry's out there, you know, leading the parade. It's just, it's a great time. Uh, so thank you to everything, uh, that our team members do to make that, that weekend awesome. Uh, mentioned the sidewalk opening with ODOT earlier today. It was fun seeing, uh, Hamlin, some of the old city counselors and, um, that was a long, long wait to get that out there, uh, but we got it. And then, yeah, you mentioned Carl Sandy Family Restaurant. I just wanted to thank our staff for, um, kind of going the extra mile for a local business owner to try to figure that out. Basically, I think what's happening is it's, they're trying to be able to serve something so that they can serve something. Yeah. And, and also be able to have their lottery machines, everything else going. And I think that's one of those like business friendly things we can do. If you're a restaurant in downtown Portland, you're in something like that happens, you're probably gonna get lost in the shuffle a little bit. And you're in a smaller community like Sandy, you know, we're able to maybe go the extra mile to help out some business owners when it makes sense. Just we need to always be making sure that we're not choosing winners and losers and favors, but we're treating everybody the same. And I think we do that really well. So with that, thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it.